Have the ability to help.
All right.
Do you have a scroll?
I'm going to finish the end here.
It's still, it has my baby in the heart.
If you're willing to help me take the motor off, I'll set it on the ground. I don't plan that.
What's next?
The bottom state.
The DA.
But it's aluminum B. It's only like, I think.
These aren't done.
Yeah, I will.
I don't think anything's been.
I was like, it's yours. Help me flip the motor.
All right, folks, we're going to call this meeting to order. We'll stand for the pledge. Oscar, you have an interest in leading us to the pledge of allegiance.
We'd love to.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Oscar. Let's say that we will go directly into our citizens to be heard at four o'clock. We will also have another opportunity at six P M. This afternoon, if anybody misses at the four P M. I saw here, we'll start with folks in the chamber here and then we'll move to the online session. Um, I guess that means please.
Sorry, I'm not used to being in the person. Can we just step up?
Um, normally I'll call people up when they raise their hand, but please have a seat and
Thanks, Bill.
State your name and introduce yourself and go from there.
All right, got to run to kiddo pickup. I'm Emily Campbell and I had three quick comments. Um, first, I am not going to be able to say for the general reason public caring, but wanted to share in 2022. We had a number of workshops with the community where this area was specifically called out for its appropriateness for both general business, but even more specifically institutions. Uh, so there's a history of positive citizen involvement, um, suggested, so I just wanted to add that to your context for your conversation. Um, I was really glad to see the discussion item on H D H O. I think that what is being presented is a very reasonable step forward without being overreactive. I did want to make two comments for consideration in your discussion. Uh, the first is I think the ripcord makes a ton of sense. At the same time, we might consider what, uh, how this applies on resale for secondary, um, owners or past. I think about a lot of the has to developments like in the Holyoke neighborhood and Doc Allen, where subsequent purchases have inflated the cost of the home beyond what's attainable to, um, local purchasers. You might consider something like a five year cliff where if people have owned a home for five years or beyond, perhaps you don't extend that one year moratorium, uh, for secondary sales, but it would keep somebody from flipping, uh, to make a gross profit, which would, I think, keep in the measure of the program. Another thing you might consider, again, just at the discussion level, is, um, some sort of mechanism to require reevaluation after a period of time objectively, such as tying a six year rolling mortgage rate, um, to this. And what I mean by that is not to add more regulation, but basically something along the lines of if this six year rolling mortgage for interest rates drop below five percent, it essentially triggers adding the rules and regulations back onto the commission's agenda just for reevaluation. The reason is we're just at a period of very high interest rates right now. When interest rates drop, we might see a different market and it would allow you to continue to support local purchasers who might see themselves competing, uh, with outside investors in a more, you know, fluid market. So two things to consider. Uh, the final thing regarding agenda item, I'm not sure, but this is uh, regarding the request of the resignation of the planning commission. I'm sure you're going to hear some comments tonight. I just want to say I don't know who this is about, um, and actually the lack of transparency was a little frustrating in the packet. Um, I've served with many people on the planning commission who I disagreed with. We've had planning commissioners who have spoke quite vehemently while they were serving about a number of issues, some being very, very pro housing, some being anti growth. We've had people represent, um, quite vocally, uh, interests in individual properties, including properties where they were a developer of their property. And our, the bylaws of the county and the planning commission protect the freedom of speech of even our volunteers up until the point that somebody is making comments about something that could, uh, that would be on the agenda as a public hearing or as an administrative item. In that case, it makes perfect sense to require objectivity. But to consider somebody, uh, being asked to resign for expressing their freedom of speech, I think, is a very dangerous precedent. I think it has the potential to politicize our boards and it would be inappropriate. Uh, we should adhere to our bylaws. We get to look at them once a year and they're there for a reason. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, all right, Tony was first back there with his hand up. We'll see what comes. Thank you, Tony.
Yep. Thank you, Chairman Field Commissioners. Um, my name is Tony Manusov. I am here today as the chairman of the planning commission. My statements do not represent the contents, the consensus of the planning commission for large. I wholly understand and support the notion that all planning commissioners serve at the pleasure of our elected officials. In that spirit, I'm here to give the highest possible service I can to you, the county commission. My advice today comes from twenty five compounded years of experience serving on nonpartisan volunteer and professional boards at the local, state and national levels. It is my understanding that you intend to consider requesting the resignation of planning commissioner Laura Long. On September sixth, twenty twenty four, planning commissioner long filed a conflict of interest statement that disclosed a non-restricted conflict relating to her involvement in the advocacy group Kane Springs Development Watch. This statement was refiled and is current as of January thirtieth, twenty twenty five. The question at hand, as I perceive it, is whether or not the county commission feels that provisions in section four of ordinance five ninety three are a sufficient administrative cure for concerns which arise in relation to section two of ordinance five ninety three and planning commission by law six point five. As I consider the spirit of section four, I am drawn to recognize that conflicts are ubiquitous within voluntary civil service, but can and must be mitigated. Good faith disclosure and refusal is the common administrative cure because it is the best way to address the practical risk of bias while continuing to encourage voluntary participation civic business. I have previously stated, all county volunteers gladly serve at the discretion and direction of the county commission. I appreciate your attention to this matter and will remain in attendance to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manusov. We're going to go with Bob next.
Hi there, I'm Bob O'Brien. I'm from Castle Valley. And I want to comment on the agenda item that requests that an unnamed planning commissioner resign. Given the lack of information on the agenda, it's not clear why the county commission might be making this request. Although I should say, uh, uh, this request, though I think the person, of course, is Laura Long, that's certainly the word on the street. I'm making these comments as a citizen of Grand County and not as a member of the planning commission. Although I should note that I've served on the planning commission for ten years. From my perspective, Laura Long's service on the planning commission meets all expectations for a planning commissioner. She attends meetings, reads the meeting package, contributes to the meetings, though she is still a bit reserved as she learns the ropes. But that's the same way I was in my first year of service. I do not know the reason for request to resign. Here's one example, however, from a credible source. That is that Laura Long has violated the bylaws of the planning commission, which state that each member of the planning commission has an ethical duty to avoid making public statements for or against any application before the commission hearing. As concluded or decisions or recommendations are rendered. I'm not aware that Laura Long has made such public statements about any application before the commission. Any application before the commission. The bylaw is very, very specific. This is not a general gag rule on speech. Political speech is protected whether the person is a planning commissioner, county commissioner, or not on any commission or board. I have heard other reasons, but they do not seem to me to be a reason to request resignation for a commissioner. I, I urge you to be very mindful of this decision. A request to resign is not minor decision. Laura Long is a valuable member of the planning commission and I know of no reason why she should be asked to resign. I do want to thank you each for your service. Uh, it's very important service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mary, we'll go with you next.
Mary O'Brien, also from Castle Valley. On the website for the Grand County Commission April first meeting, agenda number eight is titled consideration of a request for resignation of planning and zoning commission member. Beneath that agenda item appear four standard Grand County Commission prompts for information. Legal review. It's blank. Recommended motion. It's blank. Background. It's blank. Attachments. Nothing is attached. When I first read this agenda item, I wondered who's making this request? What planning and zoning commission member does the commission seek to replace? On what basis is that planning and zoning commission member being asked to resign? The Utah Open and Public Meetings Act, section fifty two dash four dash twenty two thousand two, I mean, two, two oh two, parenthesis six, parenthesis A, says that a notice for a meeting quote shall provide reasonable specificity to notify the public as to the topics to be considered at the meeting. In other words, enough information to allow the public to know what's going to be considered during an upcoming meeting so that they can weigh in. I won't speculate on why at least some members of the commission don't want to provide the public with information on this agenda item. I only suggest that in order to be in compliance with the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act, you should withdraw agenda number eight. If you want to bring up that idea again for your next meeting, post a draft of the letter ahead of time or enough legal information so that the public can investigate whether claims in the letter are valid or bogus and provide informed comment before you vote. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, my name is John, uh, Walden. I was born and raised in Moab and I work as a freelance artist. And as an evening inn keeper at the Sunfire Hill Inn, which is where I currently live and I'm speaking tonight in support of Laura Long. As well as to share my personal perspective of the King Creek development. And why it is so significant to me to see it was my grandpa Charlie Nelson that sold the property to the current owners and developers. I'm so sad to report to that my grandfather passed away two weeks ago. The morning of April fourteenth. I love my family. I'm going to miss my grandpa. And I am ready to speak, uh, to honor his memory. It is my belief that my grandfather was betrayed and lied to. My grandpa was told by the buyers that they were planning to build a cancer research center and treatment center. He was assured that the residents who were living there wouldn't be kicked out. But once they obtained the land, they did the exact opposite. The residents were kicked out. And the cancer research center wasn't even planned to begin. Um, planned to be in development. They did not keep their word. You might ask who was looking out for my grandpa? Well, my family, who held my grandpa's interest in mind was kept out the loop by the developers and the realtors involved. One of the realtors behind this, Sandy Norton. She did not put any of the promises made in the contract. Sandy also made claims that my grandpa didn't need to have family involved because he was a hundred percent capable to handle the sale on his own. This was wrong. I had lots of encounters with my grandpa at this time. I was helping him working at that time. I saw him struggling with his memory at times. He was in his nineties and he was forced into selling his land for a fraction of its value. This just doesn't sit right with me and I believe he was manipulated by the developers and the realtors involved in drafting and executing the sales contract. I leave what happened to my grandpa with elderly abuse. I intend to honor my grandfather and stay involved. Who asked you to remove Laura Long from the planning commission? Was it the developers? Laura Long has been my voice in protest to this development. Please do not silence us.
Mr. Walden, I'm sorry for your loss. I knew your grandfather when I was about thirteen or fourteen years old. So from that time until he passed. But my condolences.
My condolences also to your grandfather.
Anyone else? Yes, please, Ms. Myers.
Hello, everybody. Um, my name's Kaitlyn Myers. I am speaking today as the chair of the Mob Area Housing Task Force about the H D H O discussion item. Um, I know that Ben sent an email to the commission earlier today. Um, just wanted to take a moment here at this meeting while it's a discussion item to acknowledge, uh, all of the great conversations and work I've had with, um, Trish and Mike and Brian. The House Housing Subcommittee, um, provisions to the H D and phone A D O are a prioritized list that we talked about even last week. Um, the task force is very interested in providing support to this conversation. Um, I think that I, I haven't spent a lot of time looking at the revisions, but I think that there's some really good stuff in there. Um, Ben and I are interested in, as we've talked about as a subcommittee, about taking a kind of comprehensive approach, looking at, um, both of those ordinances, H B thirty seven, doing data analysis about our housing market, um, and taking more vocalistic approach. So I wanted to provide that context to you as you enter into your discussion tonight that we would love to have follow up conversations and be also forward. So, thanks.
Thank you, Kaylin. Yes, young lady. I'm back there.
Hello, my name's Jessica Leary. Um, I am the Moab resident uh, for about twenty five years, uh, currently in the process of moving to Castle Valley. Uh, in that time, I've served on, uh, several different boards for both the county and the city. I was on the Spanish Trail Advisory Board, uh, for three years. And then I was on the Moab City Planning Commission for three years. And one of the best parts of that experience of being on those boards is serving with people from a very diverse background to my own and having very diverse opinions and learning from one another and reaching consensus. And in that, um, I want to speak particularly about how we maintain uh, diversity on boards and volunteer positions. And in the bylaws, uh, we have things in place to stagger those appointments so that not everybody's term comes up at the same time. And in doing that, we end up with appointments from this body in their current existence. But we also end up with appointments like Laura, who was, uh, appointed before the last election. And so I want to take a minute to comment on why those things are in place to ensure continuity and institutional knowledge. So staggered terms ensure that experienced board members remain even after elections. This continuity preserves institutional knowledge, maintains stability and allows for smoother transitions with new members, when new members join. If board members are elected simultaneously, a sudden shift in membership could disrupt ongoing projects and initiatives leading to inefficiencies and potential setbacks. Uh, it also prevents single issue domination. When all board seats are up for election at once, single issue campaigns can potentially sweep the entire board, leading to an imbalance in representation and a narrow focus on a single agenda. Staggering terms mitigate this risk by ensuring a diversity of perspectives on the board at all times. And then finally enhancing long term planning, staggering terms allows for more effective long term planning. Board members can focus on strategic initiatives without the distraction of impending elections, ensuring that decisions are made with long term vision in mind. So I would urge this body to not force, uh, members to resign and let them carry out their term for its duration.
Thank you. Do we have? Yes, Mr. Gross, please.
My name is Pete Gross. Um, oh, first, I trust that you read my letter, my email, and now you're thoroughly convinced that timed entry reservation system at Arches makes perfect sense. It's the way to the future. Or to the, the comment, the, the, um, item of discussion, a friend of mine asked me to come and speak on her behalf because she couldn't make it. Um, she wanted me to point out that, um, some of the commission members have taken money funneled for, for their campaign from the developers and have not recused themselves from any of the issues related to that development. Of course, I'm speaking directly about the King Creek development. Um, I'd also like to recall, my recollection is that, uh, that one of the first things they were going to do is, uh, have a native plant nursery. I haven't seen any of that. I've seen a lot of native plants destroyed there. Anyway, um, and also, um, Commissioner Hadler, I know is an excellent example of recusing himself from issues where he might even have the appearance of conflict of interest. And I would hope that all the other commissioners would hold themselves to that standard. So, and specifically to the, the request for resignation, I think it's completely out of line. I, Laura Long has done an excellent job and I totally support her continuation of the planning mission. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, yes.
Hi. I'm Edward Hilton Grant. I'm a resident of Grand County, um, down in Spanish Valley. I've been wanting to get more involved in local politics and understand better what the heck is going on. Um, I've spoken at a couple of these at this point. We've been seeing at the national and now international scale, the use of bullying and intimidation and legal overwhelm to silence people in faith, in favor of profits, basically favoring profits over people. It's up to all of us to stand up to this bullying or at risk being silenced ourselves. When I saw on the Grand County website, the total lack of information regarding the request for resignation of Laura, it was clear to me that this was another example of using the legal system as a cudgel to enact someone's will. I can't say how I feel about Laura, especially since no information was provided online. It's absolutely absurd. Uh, but I'm certain that it's very important for everyone here to reject this at this moment and at least request more information for the public to be able to make a decision on. I wasn't able to make any sort of informed decision coming here with, you know, an agenda item that basically had nothing printed on. So I urge you guys stand up to bullying, stand up to this intimidation, because that's really important, even on a national scale right now in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, I'm going to go to the one that we have online, and then we'll come back to the.
I believe that's J J.
Okay, Mr. Trout, can you hear us? Or J J? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries. No worries. J J is a, a hard name. Um, this is Trout. Hi, I'm J J Trout. Good, uh, good evening, commissioners. I actually live in Golden, Colorado, so thanks for letting me join online. I wanted to give comment on agenda item number ten, the H D H O provisions. Um, first, I just want to let you know, I was a city counselor in Golden, also a tourist town from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. So I fully understand the complications with housing affordability and commend you all for your efforts for the workforce housing in Grand County. Um, since I left city council, I was able to take this last year and wrap up my full time role with a local nonprofit. And now my husband and I are looking for our next adventure. Our goal is to sell our home in Colorado and relocate to Moab. We were actually just out there this weekend. Excuse me, looking at condos. And the Murphy Flats condos was our top pick because it really feels like a community that did a great job building the area with a dog park and a community garden. And the fact that folks have to live there and work there and be full time, uh, residents and not have Airbnbs there was really enticing. So just the, the community aspect of it felt really great. Obviously, the land is deed restricted. Uh, my husband has a full time, full remote job. I was hoping to take some time off before digging back into a full time job. But knowing the deed restriction with Murphy Flats, I put my resume in a couple places. I've got my application out. Um, but really, I just wanted to come and talk to you today because I was a previous city counselor. I've written policy on housing. Just want to give you a little bit of fodder as like an individual out there looking to move to Moab, um, just to help you with your discussion today. And obviously I'm not going to watch the whole meeting. I'll, I'll watch it tomorrow and that you all have a discussion. But just two thoughts. Um, the first is the, from what I read and the changes to, to go from thirty hours to sixteen hours, uh, either volunteer or, or actual work paid in the area, it sounds like a great change to allow someone like me to be able to come to the area and purchase a home, um, that's affordable and, and be able to make that happen. So I'm in favor of those changes. And I'll just put a little plug in. Uh, I don't, I don't know if this is, makes any sense for the deed restriction or where you want to go for workforce housing. But if we were able to move there full time and have the opportunity to have my husband work remote and just say, you know, we're going to be fully residents in Moab, we would jump at purchasing the home, um, as soon as possible. So, uh, again, I, I commend you all for the workforce housing. It's a very difficult topic and I think you've done a great job. I will let you all decide what's best for, for Mob and the community, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of information about someone who's looking to live in the area and potentially work in the area, but hasn't found anything yet. So that's it. Thank you for your time. And again, thanks for all the work you've been doing in the Grand County area.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Trout. And is there anyone else, Quinn, that you think online? Doesn't look like it. Somebody in your audience. Oscar, please step forward.
Thank you very much, Bill. And thank you for calling on me to lead the pledge.
Yes, I appreciate you being here.
I just wanted to put my name in the at, I don't know, as the, um, as this isn't, seems like it's coming to a close and just say lots of topics being discussed about, um, the, I don't remember, the agenda, I didn't know, I'm sorry, but about the planning commission. And, and I wanted to just have a bit of discussion on the idea of precedent. I think I've talked to a few of you about that and how this even not in a specific to any specific planning commissioner, but if you, if for some reason you take one planning commissioner out, um, early and ask for resignation because of things said online or a conflict of interest or any of that, I think the side that is making that decision could, that could come back and possibly bite them just because, um, because if a, if a second, if that, if the opposing side gets, um, power, gets a majority and asks for the resignation of another, um, post on the board on the opposing side, then that's just, that's, I mean, that's using a precedent that was used by one side for them, by the other side for the other side. I think that's, that's fair to do, but I also think it's a little bit unneeded, unwanted. There's a lot more important things to do in Moab, I believe. I mean, we've got all these questions of housing and as we've heard and it's, and my big And it's, and my big thing is, is this necessary? And do you want whatever, this is, do you want the after effects of whatever this is? This resignation, whether it will result in, do you want any sort of hailing, if you will? But yeah, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Oscar. We always appreciate having you here. Anybody else in the room? Yes, young lady.
Hey, my name is Leanna. I've been in Moab for about four years. I didn't come with a with a statement prepared, so I'm going to do my best. I think that Agenda Number Eight is quite strange why there wasn't more information. I feel like if this was something that was not shady, information would have been provided about who it is, what they've been doing to break any rules. But nothing like that was even provided. So I think that this comes off as shady. And I don't know if that's what the intention was, but I think that in order for us to be a community and actually be able to have our voices heard, we need to have more information. And this was, this feels, I'm just going to say it again, this feels really shady.
Hi, I'm Audrey Graham. I've been here forty years. And I also am very concerned about Item Number Eight on the agenda. I'm sorry, I was working all day and I haven't had a good chance to look at this, but I would like to say, is this an effing April Fool's joke? I'm sorry. But this, having served on this council, I know and I don't understand how an item like this could be on the agenda for someone who was a volunteer commission member of any shape, size, or color. And items like this are to be done in closed session discussing somebody's personal whether there's a problem or something. So for this to be on an open agenda item with no names and nothing, hello, April Fools. No way.
Yes, please step forward, young man.
Hello, my name is Jesse. Initially, when hearing about this, I felt the need to come and.
Jesse, just for the record, can you give us your full name?
Jesse Fairclaw.
Thank you.
Thank you. My thoughts and concerns are around the processes, procedures, protocols, and bylaws for bringing on and eliminating commission members. I want to bring attention to the commission that during the Kane Creek Town Hall, where contradicting facts were being presented both by Kane Creek Developing hired feasibility statement and the governor's office, two primary questions were being read up during this town hall. Who's listening and what are the obligations, legal obligations otherwise, to listen? It was stated directly by the governor's office that there were no legal obligations or otherwise obligations of the governor's office to review the public period on it period. With such limiting information provided during the meeting agenda, it seems the public voice and freedom of commentary is being silenced or restricted. While others are receiving direct donations from the same project and conversation without self or peer recognition of conflict of interest, moving forward, I am curious to see more information speaking to the process and who is authorized to determine conflict of interest and what kind of investigative investigation and information is required to determine that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Please step forward.
Hey, Dan Ken, forty-year resident, downtowner, just like Bill.
And before I even get started, this is only three minutes, but I just wanted to say that what I'm hearing behind me is that that there is an incredible cross-section. I'm hearing commentary tonight. And one of the great things about coming to these meetings is that people are generally civil and we've got a diverse community. And, you know, diversity is a word that is not really in favor these days with on the national level, but it's an amazing thing in terms of the strength of the environment and our community and the fact that we respect that. It's really beautiful. And so I, I want to thank the new commission members, especially just for taking a shot at this and getting involved, volunteering your time. Joining in into the fray, which hopefully isn't too much of a fray, because this is a, something that we're building, this commission, this town. We're building it together and we've got to work together because we're a small town out at the end of the road, the edge of the wilderness. And so to me, it really makes me feel good, but I know that we all get along well. And that we're kind of outside, we're kind of a bubble outside this crazy world. It's just partisanship and enmity is exploding into wars everywhere. And I pray that that does not happen to us and it seems like we're holding pretty good. Try to be quicker. Yeah, welcome and thanks to new members for volunteering and well, and thanks to the old members for serving and protecting Moab's unique gift of abundant, accessible public lands at this crucial time. It's gratifying to witness you working to make our roads network safe, sensible, and low impact. So diversity is strength, good for a town. Remember that pro tourism was once a minority liberal opinion in the eighties and nineties. I quit the industry in eighty-nine because I didn't want to accelerate Moab's demise as a premier wildlands refuge. I was a mountain bike tour guide, backpacking guide, a rafting guide, a climbing guide, on and on. I don't do that anymore except on a small scale. Today's starting guides make the same amount of money that I made then, unadjusted for inflation. So there's a bigger pie and more people gaining from it. That's, I think, our bigger problem with less coming in for all this. Anyway, the best virtue of Moab then, when I was a guy, were dark skies, quiet, scent of the desert, endless, unconfined, and uncrowded adventure in every direction. Now we got people jumping in to help developers with every harebrained, get rich quick scheme they can dream up and settle our future generations with the literal wreckage. Might have just pointed out the two tramps. Diversity is good, but not when elected officials lie about listening to the people, constantly attack representatives they disagree with, always side with outside development interests and call for the resignation and removal of ordinary, hard-working locals who believe in and are committed to that, which makes Moab special, such as our special wildlands and homegrown businesses like CenterT, Moonflower Market, or Bike Shops, public lands agencies, on and on. Those are just the ones I'm just mentioning. And remember, the Southern Youth Wilderness Alliance, which everybody seems to think is some kind of conspiracy, has played a huge role in protecting the stunningly gorgeous landscape we make our living off of. Lots of volunteer people, including myself, involved in that organization, the same land that sustains our spirits. We can thank that movement for protecting and caring for this great gift, or we can curse them as the extremists on both sides do for making this remote desert town so special and unique. And that calls for special consideration when we're in our situation. We have gifts that nobody else has, and one of them is ninety-seven percent of this county is public. Anyway, Laura Long, Mary McGann, and many others are working to sustain Moab's fragile natural beauty and provide real solutions to real Moabites that actually live and work here, not give grants and special laws to billionaires who laughably came, claim to make it a paltry ten percent of the homes affordable in their developments. I guess I can stop it. But I appreciate you guys. Really well said. So many angles here. We're really fortunate to have this kind of diversity of knowledge and the ability to speak it.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Danny. Appreciate you.
Hi, y'all. My name is Heather Beagle. I've lived in Moab for four years. I don't have the breadth of experience that folks have that I can sit up here and so I'm not going to try to echo any of the things that they said. But I will tell you what, my take on the, the call for resignation is here. I think at a time where people are starting to feel a lot of uncertainty and distrust with politics at a national level, things are moving very quickly, folks aren't really knowing what's going on. A lot of people are turning to their local government to feel some sort of, maybe a sense of safety or trust somewhere where they can lean when everything else, depending on your viewpoint, might seem a little scattered and chaotic. With that being said, I think when I'm looking at the, the call for resignation, like echoing folks that have said, and there's no information, I think at a local level, we would like more transparency. It is also concerning to me that there seems to be, this could be construed as a conflict of interest more internally, that perhaps some of Laura Long's, if you believe so, where she is standing on certain issues, might be at conflict with others here. Commission, I don't know. That's just how it looks from a public person who does not have a deep well of experience, such as yourself and other folks in this room. So I figured I'd share my piece. And I thank you all for your service and your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Don.
I'm Don Hamilton. This is Krista Wilson, representing the County Lands PRCA rodeo. Appreciate you guys having us. So we'd like to speak as citizens in favor of the arena.
Arena built, act number two.
Agenda item.
Yes. Thank you guys for seeing us like Don said. Many of you, I have seen out at our rodeo over the past few years. And we do appreciate your continued support and Grand County's continued support of our event. For those of you that have been there in the last few years, you'll notice the event has exploded. It has been an amazing sight to see. With a new stock contractor that we have recently picked up called Legacy Pro Rodeo, they have brought a whole new level of experience and professionalism to our event. With that, our cowboys and cowgirls have doubled in the amount of contestants we've had, thus needing more stock and needing for a little bit better upgrade to our facility. Last year, for example, we crippled our Slack competition, which is those are the cowboys and cowgirls that are not able to make the main berth because our curfs were full, our Friday, Saturday, Sunday matinee. Every event was filled, stacked full of cowboys and cowgirls. And we went from having three barrel racers in twenty twenty-two in our Slack to forty-two barrel racers in our twenty twenty-four Slack. On top of the first time ever hosting tie-down events and the team roping in the Slack, that's never happened in the history of our rodeo. So when the Old Spanish Trail Arena comes up to give their report, we would like to voice our support in order to see new pens, new arena facilities, and just to help this event grow even bigger.
The arena is a huge asset to our county here. It's used for not only the rodeo, but lots of livestock events during the year. Four-H, FFA events, statewide competition on road access. And so we do need to continue to put investment into the arena. The pens and shoots and stuff, I think they're thirty years old. They're falling apart. We weld on them every year, fix on them every year. So, yeah, as Krista said, this year's rodeo will be bigger than ever. Legacy is bringing all their stock, not just half of it this year, to help support us. And then we also have some additional events. And so we, we anticipate a banner drought. And so with that, we just need to continue to invest to do that.
The one thing to look forward to this year is Legacy Pro Rodeo is starting a series called Road to the Gold. And if anybody wants to get online and research it, it's fantastic. The website is r2glive.com. And it'll give you a rundown of the event that they're hosting. We are part of a ten rodeo circuit that they are giving away a twenty thousand dollar trailer and a ten thousand dollar purse for the first place winner. On top of us being a legacy rodeo in the state of Utah with Days of Forty Seven Rodeo to Salt Lake, they have given us an extra eighteen thousand dollars in purse money for our contestants. With the combination of us having turquoise and Mountain State Circuit co-approvals, so Utah, Idaho, Nevada, we are the Wilderness Circuit, and we get co-approvals now from Wyoming, Colorado, Arizona, New Mexico. So we are bringing in contestants basically from the entire western states. And that includes a handful of world champions. We had fifteen world champions that are with us last year, which is really, really great to see. So in order.
Daughter, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So in order to keep this event growing and booming like we would like, new equipment is an absolute essential.
And it's, it's a huge contributor to Grand County and Moab City. When this rodeo is going on, lots of rooms, lots of food, lots of fuel, plus all the other events that happen at the arena that would also utilize this equipment. They recently had the junior rodeo out there. It was very well attended and a lot of people staying in rooms and eating food here.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate you bringing that information in. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak up here at the four o'clock so that it can be heard? It's not going, going, gone. Move on then. Thank you. Let's see. What I would like to do is back up just a little bit. Thanks for Jock reminding me. I did it when we started this meeting. I didn't mention those that were in attendance. Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler, Commissioner McGurty, Commissioner McGann, Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner McCandless, and myself, Commissioner Winfield. We've got our county attorney, Stephen Stocks, administrator Mark Tyner, and clerk auditor Jay Boyce. Thank you with Quinn back here. I want to call accountable, keeping this online. So with that, we can move forward with our presentations. It looks like we're going to start out with Rim to Rim with Bryce Rogers and Sophia.
Thank you, guys. I'm going to share my screen.
I know just I'm going to mention this as I do to a lot of people, but ten minutes, five minutes for questions, and then we can move on to the next one. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think slight tech issues. I just wonder if you have this in your boxes to pull up.
While Sophia is doing that, I can introduce us. As Mitch and Mike both said, we're representing Rim to Rim Restoration, which is a local nonprofit. My name is Bryce Rogers. I'm a project coordinator for Rim to Rim. And this is Sophia Fisher. She is our project outreach coordinator, specifically with flood and fire. So today, we are going to be presenting to all of you on our Community Wildfire Defense Grant and the progress therein. So we do have a number of partners, but soon as we get screen up, my keys are for everybody to actually read those to me, going through them verbally. But clearly, Grand County is one of our larger partners as a piece of our grant is to come and present our progress to each of our partners and primary partners that we have.
It's a real, right, John? Quinn could probably share that. Sophia, if you would like him to do it, if you don't, if you're not going to be able to get it out.
I'm actually.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Bryce.
Totally fine. I'm getting in there. Okay, I'm waiting to be let in. Okay, can everybody see?
Thank you.
Okay, fabulous. In someone who's sorting us off, Bryce, can everybody hear us online too? I know that the mic can get a little funky. Oh, yay. Okay, Fabulous. Well, Bryce already introduced us. I'm the outreach specialist for interim restoration. Thanks so much for having us. We're going to present on the Community Wildfire Defense Grant. And I just want to start out by listing our project partners because this is a project that is really anchored by various local partners here in Moab and Grand County. So our stakeholders include the Moab Valley Fire Department, Utah Division of Forestry Fire and State Lands and County, the City of Moab, the Nature Conservancy, Moab Solutions, and Science Moab. And I can start us off with just a little overview about the Community Wildfire Defense Grant. It is a federal award that Rim to Rim Restoration and a coalition of local organizations was awarded last year. It's a total five point two million dollars, spread out over five years. So that's from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. And the bulk of the project is around reducing and mitigating hazardous fire fuels along the Millin-Pac Creek corridors and in the Matheson Wetlands and doing related outreach. The funding is federal. It's an award from the U.S. Forest Service and then gets passed down as a subaward through the state of Utah. I talked a little bit about our local partners already. In Rim to Rim, we are the project manager and the grant administrator. So while all of the funding passes through us, a majority of funding is actually earmarked or allocated for other local product partners. And we convene our partners every two months at the Creek Stewardship Working Groups. And as county commissioners, you are all welcomed at those meetings if you ever want to attend. So just a little background on this, the grant for this actually.
So just a little background on this. The grant for this, actually, and the application for it, was something that just did not come out of nowhere. This is something that fits with the objectives that have been within our community for the past twenty years' work. And the grant itself specifically ties back to existing plans such as the Community Wildfire Preparedness Plan and the CWPP, which is also up for updating this year. So hopefully these two things will dovetail nicely. As Sophia mentioned, we do have a reporting group where we basically come together and work with local entities to try to figure out what is needed and where we have overlap specifically in regard to our fire mitigation. But as we all know, with the creeks in Grand County, fires tend to come with flood mitigation as well. So luckily, we're able to meld those two public safety pieces together within this cooperative. So as we move forward with the CWPP at this, sorry, CWDG, there's too many acronyms. So we do evaluate each property, be they private or public, using quantifiable and objective metrics. So the biggest piece that Grand County has in terms of this partnership is Grand County Weeds Department. So Grand County Weeds does get the specific amount of money that is on the slide here for what is basically going to be their urban weeds specialist, which I believe is still posted and will hopefully be posted very soon. And this is somebody who gets to support our work, whether we have firefighters going in and removing these larger woody fuels. They can then with the herbicidal treatment, which you can see there on the pictures with the blue looking stumps, to make sure that none of those trees are actually coming back and reseeding themselves to continue the problem. Additionally, they are helping us with public outreach as well as fire fuel mitigation.
And there are also a few other ways that the Community Wildfire Defense Grant Project more broadly will help benefit the weeds department here. So for example, I'll be working with Izzy and folks in her department to develop reusable outreach materials that can be shared with landowners and residents throughout the valley to help them understand the weeds issue in the county and help them understand how to reduce their weeds year over year. These weeds are often also hazardous fire fuels. That's the title of the grant. Izzy will also be collaborating with various project partners to develop best management practices and conduct site visits with landowners in the valley, again, aimed at reducing weeds year over year. I also want to mention that while the weeds department is our primary Grand County partner in this project, we do liaise with other departments. So for example, we spoke with somebody from the Roads Department today. We were working with Cora until she left. And we've spoken with Bill Hulse, the Flood Plane Administrator as well, which segues really well into the next slide where we want to discuss different other aspects of the Community Wildfire Defense Grant and other kind of related creek work that Rim to Rim's been doing recently. So I'll start out by discussing outreach. That's my job. That's my thing. Outreach is a really big and important component of the Community Wildfire Defense Grant, of doing outreach with the community. And the goal is really to give landowners and community members the tools they need to understand the fire fuels issue in our town, especially along the creek corridors, and to give them the tools they need to reduce the fire fuels that may be on their own properties, encourage their neighbors to use, and things like that. So it really is the longevity aspect of this grant, I would say, that aims to kind of cement the grant goals far past 2029. It's truly crucial. I'll be doing this work through the creation of print handouts, mailers, things like that, the development of a robust social media presence, a website, developing our own in-person educational events, tabling at other events, automating that can happen. And I also want to mention as well that while the Community Wildfire Defense Grant, it is a fire fuels focused grant, it doesn't really focus on floods. Floods are still really relevant and important to this work in the creek corridors. Because essentially, when you remove invasive overgrown vegetation from the creeks, you're not only reducing fire risk, you're also opening up the creek corridors to better pass flood flows. So we were able to develop a partnership and get support from the city of Moab this year to dovetail in some messaging around flood mitigation and flood preparedness into our fire fuels outreach this year, which is really exciting. So it is deeply relevant to this work, but isn't primarily funded by the.
So with that, we do tend to do a lot of landowner outreach, specifically with the fire department going out and trying to assess properties for potential risk and helping to assess removal. One of the biggest pieces of that is also educating landowners on whether or not they can facilitate a lot of this removal on their own and sort of keep this knowledge within the community. Additionally, whenever we are trying to assess any risk, we use a lot of remote sensing techniques that don't necessarily require us to go in and contact every single landowner. We all know we have several people here that own property where they have secondary homes, potentially vacant lots. They can be a lot harder to contact. We can use LiDAR and other remote sensing techniques to try to figure out whether or not we have an overgrowth of invasive species on that property and then work through the process of actually contacting those landowners.
And to ask for the next slide, this is partially an excuse to just show off some cool photos I was able to take of CWDG-funded work in the last couple of months. I do want to mention too, I realize we should have mentioned this earlier. You may have heard that Community Wildfire Defense Grant funds were paused as of late February. We're really excited and thrilled to report that they have been unpaused as of March twentieth. So the project is back up and running. We're getting our bearings again and really thrilled to continue this. But we also want to say that regardless of any individual funding stream, we are really committed to this work that make, you know, Grand County residents and watersheds safer. And we truly do see this as critical disaster preparedness work for fires and floods that are going to happen again at some point. So we're thrilled that funding is back and we're going to continue to seek new funding avenues and local partnerships to bolster this work, especially around that flood mitigation and outreach component. That was a lot of information. That's kind of all we have for you right now. We have some of our contact info up on the screen. We welcome you to reach out with any questions or comments. We're doing a lot of outreach right now with stakeholders, trying to understand the concerns that y'all have about creek hazards, whether those are fires or floods, or concerns and questions you tend to hear from your constituents. So if you have any thoughts on that?
We do have a pitch. So Team Rubicon is in town right now and they are a big piece of this work. So if anybody is interested in going to see any of the fire fuels removals actively happening, let us know. We can tell you where Rubicon is.
I'd be interested if you would send us the information on your meetings. Maybe send that to just the commission that would go to all state commissioners. I think it's commission at grandcountyutah.net. Also, I'm glad to hear that your funding is back on. That's good news. So anybody else have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate. Thanks a lot.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. It looks like Mr. Vals, did he step out? Oh, there he is, back in the backside. Mr. Vals.
We show. Can we pull that chart up, though?
And I see Quinn up right here, somebody.
All right. Quinn, can you pull up our chart up? The quarterly financial report. While Zach comes up, I'm Stephen Vals, the Finance Officer. I work for this guy. And we just have a couple topics to bring you. Bring up today. Wait for this to come up. All right. So this is our first snapshot of tax revenue collections to date. Now, we only have January, February, and March actual tax distributions coming to us. And it's important to note this is sales, hospital, CRT, TRCCA, not property tax. So this is kind of a variable tax. So let me just describe this chart because we should all get used to it. The blue line is the forecasted revenue. Last December seventeenth, this commission approved the revenue forecast, which was that, just a forecast. So sixteen point nine million dollars forecasted over the year. And this is, it went. This is what we had expected to see the revenue come in. So what we're going to do now is track that revenue and see how we do against what we thought would happen. Here it comes back again. So the little green bar is the actual tax collections. And it's important to note this, tax receipts are received two months after they actually happened. So the revenue we received in March really was for January. You see, actually, that March is the lowest tax receipt number. So it would, you know, apply to January. So the green bar is, or the green line is actuals. See, we're pretty close, but the first month we came a little bit under. So our revenue forecast is represented by the red line below. So far, we're one hundred and eighty-six thousand four forty-eight below what we forecasted. Now, a little two charts on the left side. The top one is what we forecasted in terms of revenue growth or contraction in some cases back in December when we created the budget. So overall, we estimated like a point three, like a half a percent growth for this year. So far, within three months, we are, we've updated that revenue forecast and we're at minus half a percent to date. So now, this is, this is, this is the, the, the science of tax receipts today. Guess what we expect to plan to see? So what are we going to do about? That's the science. So the hard, you know, forecasting revenue is a little more difficult. We could read the newspaper headings and talk about, you know, consumer confidence and tourism and trade wars and all these things. But, or you could even walk downtown at five o'clock in the afternoon and think, my gosh, this is, you know, Moab is full of tourists. But the best we can do, clerk auditor's office here, is just keep tracking this forecast through June, July, August, when we start the 2026 budget year, taking account the actual revenue performance as guidance for the next year. I think we know what I mean. We're down on revenue. We may have to be talking about cost cutting next year. So, so any flashes? We're, I'm sorry. We're going to use the same this chart. And we'll show this chart every year, every month. Then we can see how revenue is coming in.
Monthly or quarterly is what Mary asked.
Well, quarterly, but I will update this. I actually keep track of monthly metrics. I put them in a Google Drive folder that the gentleman here were.
Howard. Mike. Our rental tax is. Is there any direct answer to the more than double negative? I mean, we expected a minus one point three percent and actuals to date are negative two point eight percent? Is there, is there a direct answer for that?
I don't have an answer. These are numbers we get from Utah. I wish I knew that one. That's an interesting one. Restaurant, I could see being up because people may not stay, rent harder, stay in hotels, but they're going to eat. But I don't understand the minus two point eight on carbon. I would say as far as the adjusted forecast and where we're at as far as, you know, three months into the year, it's it's really tricky to try to jump to any conclusions based on where we're at today. But Stephen mentioned June, July, August, then we can really start getting serious about what the numbers are looking at. That would be my counsel.
Thank you.
But the one thing I will, it should be clear to anybody is that we started the year with kind of a pessimistic view. Three months in, reveals under that. That's just the math.
So the January numbers, Stephen, are actually the, coming in from November, right?
Is that right? Yes, yes. It's two months, about two months late.
No.
Yes.
If I, when you do the chart, if there could be some way that you indicate that, you know, January is when you receive it, but maybe indicate that it's from the month of. I don't know if that's possible. I don't need to put.
Well, actually, it's interesting. Utah State Tax or Tourism, they actually moved their charts over two months. So, but they're always two months late, you know, so they would show, they would just have, you know, the two month delay.
And we can figure it out. It's not that big a deal. It was just, you know, if you didn't have to go, okay, back three months. Just right under there, it said, that's November.
Regardless of the two month delay, this is what we expect to happen each month and we'll compare it to what actually. Sorry, the delay is already embedded in.
Just going to make a general comment here. Thank you for a very understandable graph. Like literal lights of what we have. Thank you. Sometimes we see a lot of graphs that have a lot of information on it. This one is very understandable. Yeah, like that.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? There's one more. There's one more page of some other random metrics here. I think we can go on. Okay. All right. This is, the top table is just the general fund performance for 2024. You can see what the final budget was, what the actuals were. And in both cases, these are favorable. We earned one hundred and ninety-four thousand more in general fund revenue and we spent about four hundred thousand dollars less in general fund for 2024. And that was based on what actually happened to what we amended at the end of the year. So we shot a little low. We, you know, shot a little low on expenditures or on revenues and what actually came in and shot a little high on expenditures, if I said that right. And we calibrated that correctly. And it's important to note that we ended up five hundred ninety-two thousand dollars under budget. And that, that reflects the, the final budget amendments took into account an eight hundred thousand dollar budgeted overspent, so pulled from the fund balance. And so we ended up nearly six hundred K under. So it's almost a differential of one point four million there. And so that kind of further bolsters that idea that it's, it is a sound practice to budget, budget in the red as we have it in recent years. Yeah.
This year, we budgeted over, correct?
We did budget again as we have one million. We've had a couple expenditures come on, but I'll watch the budget. It's just, it's recorded. All right. The next bullet there is just the 2024 audit and the financial statements. It's beginning right away. Dave and I are closing out 2024. We're starting, we're producing reports for the auditors. So over the next, well, you can see the calendar here. We're finalizing now. We will go through the audit, April through June, and then publish financial statements by the end of June. Be happy to share anything that we find this worthy to you. And then the next item, airport restricted funds. I had shared a memo with the commission regarding some math sis I did regarding some fun, some funds that are comprised in the general fund reserve balance that are restricted to airport uses that can be used for operations or capital expenses. And we'll make sure that there's a note in the 2024 financial statements that moving forward, designating those as restricted, and I'll be consulting with the auditors as it relates to potentially transferring those funds so they don't reflect in the general fund. So that they're just in order to avoid confusion.
Quick question along with those lines. In, I understand airport restricted funds, restricted for airport work. But one point five or one point one five eight million, is the interest earned off from last year to this year? Is the interest restricted off of that too? Because with math says that's thirty K. Just on our interest rates, is that thirty K that we earn an interest on that amount of money restricted funds for the airport also?
Yeah, that, I, I believe that they would off, off the cuff. I do, I do think that that would definitely be the case.
Okay.
And so.
Just hope that money still helps. I mean, even if it's occurring interest, it's still helping the airport.
Well, interestingly enough, we will allocate interest to the particular fund or department that owns any investment. So we give it to the airport, whether it's restricted or not.
Okay. I still want that interest. I mean, because I know thirty K comparatively, speaking to the larger numbers, is not a lot, but thirty K more to the airport or their completion of projects or directed at is, it's a lot of money.
Okay. The next bullet up there is kind of just a repeat or reminder of what we, what we've done for the budget. We used to budget economic development film in Fund Twenty-three because of a Utah State Audit action. All of this economic development should go to Travel Council Fund, which is twenty-three, I'm sorry, maybe I said it before, sixteen was the old. Twenty-three is the Travel Council. It's just to make it very clear, this is Travel Council, Bill and Promotion Convention. And any economic development funding will be the general fund separating those outcomes.
Do you know when that will be updated on the state auditor website?
In, in terms of the, what do you mean by the budget that's uploaded on the state auditor website?
Yes. Updated the fund transfer. I had a question from someone that this fund transfer was not available online.
Are you talking about just fund transfer for economic?
Are you talking about just fund transfer for economic, from the general fund? Cause it's all in Fund Twenty Three right now.
It's all in Fund Twenty Three, but the, the transfer from twenty three over to sixteen, right?
No, sixteen to twenty three, it happened.
Twenty three, yeah.
So it is what's on Utah State Auditor site.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
We won't memorialize the changes that we all agreed to in terms of. How that budget is actually broken down in twenty three based on the sort of. Um, I, you know, I may have made that last ditch effort to transfer it to twenty three, um. Without, you know, without the clarity that was needed based on a line, uh, line by line budget. Uh, and that, tho- those changes which are available, um, in agenda packets and, and I, I'm happy to produce, uh, you know, those documents again. As needed, uh, those won't be memorialized officially until we actually do a budget amendment. Uh, right now, it's just, there, there's a tacit approval that that's the operational budget, uh, what we presented in previous meetings here in this early year. And then last but not least, um, just, it's an important thing to note because there is a significant budget impact, um. Is that my, my calculations show that there's an amount of, uh. TRT funds that won't be available for mitigation use. Uh, my project, projections based on what we forecasted to receive this year in TRT. Uh, and the statutory changes that will be taking effect. Which included a rating, a rate increase, uh, that you all will potentially be considering from four point two five percent to four and a half percent that will start on July first. Uh, as well as a, um, a change in percentage split between the uses, uh, the. Produces of TRT. I did make an addition to the packet this afternoon that shows my math and how I get, get to that number. And so look forward to any feedback or, uh. Follow up as needed, um, and how I got there.
That's it. Any questions?
When I, I would just stress, um, Steve, I know we're only three months in, so we're not getting a very accurate picture, but. I don't think we want to wait until we're twelve months in to start coughing on next year's budget. So I would hope that next quarter we can. Start cautioning departments if we need to, if there is a concern that that downward trend continues, that, that would be important to them. On the shortcoming from the TRT legislation here, I also know that, or believe that the bill for restaurant. Tax is gonna see an increase with the prepared foods that comes from the convenience stores, so. It, it, I don't know how to get an estimate on that, what that number is gonna be, but it would be interesting if you would, in the next set of graphs, track that money a little bit. Because I, I hear people speaking that it's gonna be a huge number and so I, I don't wanna speak out of turn. But we're gonna make up a huge amount of that with that. Prepared foods at convenience stores, so I, I think that will. Actually be net positive, but it'd be nice if we were tracking that number a little bit to see how that starts changing.
Thanks for bringing that up. Yep, we can do that.
We have the data.
Yeah.
Produce the course.
Is that kicking on, on July first also?
I couldn't speak.
Obviously, it's like July. You know, and then another thing is we need to make sure that our departments, um, EMS, search and rescue. Um, that they're, they're recording the proper data that they're gonna need for the grant as well. Um, so, you know, when we do go through that TRT legislation. We'll need to make sure that we're recording all of those so that we are, you know, first in line to try to get some of those. You know, a, a couple of things on this, and I know it's just. You know, it's really November, December, kind of the last months, but, you know, I just want to. Fourth straight year, right, of a decline in our revenues. Um, this is, this is something that, that us as a commission, we need to make a plan. Right? Cause as revenues keep declining and expenses keep coming up. I mean, we can't, we can't keep going on this year. I mean, uh, one million dollars that we. Over budgeted this year, you know, and I know that it, it worked out well last year. But I don't think that we're gonna keep coming up in the positive. Uh, if that's the case. You know, I mean, I, I've talked a little bit, you know, I think that we need to be looking into that reservation system. Um, I've mentioned that before. I think this is, this is another thing EMS coming. You know, the, the previous time, I mean, that was the Canary and the Combe, I think that we're gonna. Like Trish had said, we're gonna start seeing more people coming in, you know, when budgets are, or when they're not making their ends right now, so. I think this commission really needs to go ahead and start making a plan of what we're gonna do for this. And, uh, start getting some feeling. You know, I mean, cause I mean, last thing that I wanna do is go out and start raising property taxes. You know, it's not, it's not on my agenda at all. We're stone unturned, you know, going out there and trying to get this, get this figured out.
Well, back to your point, we track that, the revenue graph. Twenty seven, about twenty seventh of every month, so I'll update that monthly and. Share it somehow.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you, both of you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we did have a department report that Bill had something come up, so he's off now. We, we don't have the sheriff on, it doesn't look like. Agency reports. Nothing there. Okay, so we'll go to the general reports. Do we have any commissioners with? Commission members with disclosures that we want to get out there?
Steven, I have a question. What's the amount that I need to disclose for the contribution to my campaign?
Uh, ca- campaign contributions, if it's over five hundred dollars, then you have to disclose for the following year.
Okay, yeah, I would like to just make a disclosure on the general rezone of nineteen seventy. They had a, a, a campaign, uh, contribution from, uh, Curtis Moss.
Okay, Michael. As always, my wife works for Sheriff's Park.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll go on to general commission reports, some future considerations. Trish, do you wanna start?
I'm ready. Do you want me to start my timer? I'm, I'm gonna move fast. I'm gonna have it written down and I was like, I loved it. Hey, all right, so I'm gonna go really fast. Um, so on the nineteenth, I met with the mayor and city admin regarding, um, the CJC. To talk about possible options if they have properties. And it was a great discussion, but they don't, so that was okay. We just reached out. On the twentieth, I went with Mary to the Canyon Co- Country Partnership. I'm gonna try to be really brief. That meeting is amazing. Um, it was four hours long, so I'm gonna try to just hit on the pieces that I think relate to us. The National Park Service talked in about the delay in hiring seasonals. Um, thus having to prompt shorter hours, no fiery furnace due to lack of seasonals and search and rescue. They stated very clearly that last year visitation was up two point six percent from twenty three to twenty four, sorry, not last year, from twenty three to twenty four. The Colorado River Authority talked about using LiDAR to understand snowpack and runoff, which is really intriguing. The Forest Service lost a fifth of their staff was terminated, but most should be reinstated, but it is, she's just felt like it was quite chaotic there. And lack of rangers on the ground. UDOT was there and they mentioned, and Bill, I know you've mentioned this before, that that gap on the river trail should be built in twenty six, is that correct? I believe that's what he stated. Um, Salon County talked about they're doing a la- uh, land use code update. I know that, I know they've been doing a ton of public meetings and there's been. Some hubbub, um, but he, he was great. Energy Fuels is ramping up uranium mining outside of Blanding. BLM Moab talked about climbing avoidance for raptor nesting and big horn, big horn sheep lambing. CNHA talked about that they have now up their hours to seven PM to aid Canyonlands and Arches National Park and just. Uh, making sure they're serving visitors. State Parks stated that they were in twenty, twenty twenty four up two point five percent. Um. Forest fires and state lands talked about they're doing some thinning along the river quarters. And then we did get to go out to Dead Horse State Park. Um, you know, kind of just stating again, and Tony's here, so I'm, I'm glad he's here. That state park, or it's not Dead Horse, sorry about that, Utah Raptor, my apologies. Would not exist without Tony and use Man Q so and bear him again, so. It's a really, really exciting proposal. They don't know when they're gonna open. They keep just having glitches, so, um. They just kinda keep delaying that, that brand opening. Um, on the twenty fourth, I talked to four H, unfortunately. USU moved the four H position or they moved her, her specifically, kind of absorbed her. So right now Cory, Cory's kind of absorbing those current four H staffing issues, um, and, and that's tough. Cause he's already got a lot to do. On the twenty fourth, we, I had a planning commission meeting. We're gonna be talking about the McKnight's Rezone. We did have a discussion about the USPO, which is the Water. Source Protection Overlay, which is the EPA Single Source Aquifer Overlay. We're gonna be looking at protections from, from chemical and pathogen contaminants. And so there's gonna be a subcommittee that's formed to look at that overlay and the possible red line revisions to our land use code. We had a housing subcommittee meeting, which has just been going super well. I wanna thank. Uh, Moab Area Land Trust for being there, HASSU for being there, Ronnie Schultz for being there. Um, and then we're just, I think things are going really well. We're having some really vibrant discussions and, um. I, I had a MOP meeting. It was the hundredth meeting of MOP, which is pretty cool, Moab Area Watershed Partnership. But they were quite concerned and I'm gonna bring that forth and I'll write a letter concerned about the closures to the USGS and National Park Service offices. We had a presentation by the Nature Conservancy about. The wetlands, um, basically the overall assessment is, it is just drier than ever. And more woody vegetation and they're really trying to secure more water into those wetlands. And as you know, Arnie's position will be vacant coming in July. I went to a Zone Seven Conservation District up in, um, Green River. Um, overall assessment, soil moisture is bleak. San Juan and Grand Counties are now currently in, um. D two status, what that means is severe drought status, so there's quite a bit of monies that come to farmers and ranchers when you go to those. Types of statuses. HB two thirty seven is the rollback tax and I've been kinda talking to, to Chris and Gabe about this for a while, but. There was a law passed that now a hundred percent of that rollback tax will be coming to the counties. But that money needs to be used for agricultural easements, which I do have some things in mind, so. Um, the Colorado River Authority, Mark Stillson spoke. It was an excellent presentation, kind of just a couple. Quick hints on that, as, as to the Colorado. Colorado River Compact in nineteen twenty, we know that there were seven point nine million acre feet that was allotted. Current produce, production on that river is twelve point five million acre feet. So you might be going, hmm, um, the demand on the river right now, it's fourteen to sixteen million acre feet. So you know, we're use, we're using more water than there is in the river. How do you do that? You have reservoirs. And basically in the end, you start. Uh, drying up those reservoirs. And so in the end, we have to look at the upper and lower basins taking cuts. Right now, the lower basin's conceded to a one point five million acre feet, feet cut. The upper basin's. Not been doing much yet, but you know, the river's just not producing. Four to six million acre feet of water. So demand management from the Colorado River Authority spins around. Their goal is they wanna keep farmers farming. They wanna protect municipality water sources. And we need to produce power. And so to do that, you know, we will see. So lastly, my future consideration, I talked about it in the past, but again, I think we need to be. Do an education of commissioners, department heads and employees as to our role as commissioners and. The authority that we have. Like, how, so how'd I do? I tried to go really fast. I had a lot, I'm sorry.
I was relying on you to start your timer and I'm.
I'm sorry.
Guessing that you didn't, but that's all right, if we can, please.
Is it long?
Please be cautious and be informed.
I know, sorry about that. That a lot of me.
Sorry, a lot of me considerably shorter and I will, uh, channel the ghost of Farmer Commissioner Clapper, whose seat I am occupying and start with, uh, the end of the month is slow for me. I did attend a few different things. I was part of the non-motorized trail master plan. Uh, proposal selection committee. We met last week and, uh, discussed a few, uh. Pretty very, very good proposals, actually, and we narrowed it down after considerable discussion to two bids. And we will, uh, conduct interviews with those, um. Those bidders tomorrow and come up with a final decision on who will, uh. We will go with, um, to take care of the active transportation. Aspect of the new non-motorized trail master plan. Um, I also wanna point out that that is in collaboration with the city and there's a few folks in the city there and they were great, uh, at the discussion. Um, I was also on the selection committee to find a contractor for the, for a new roof for Star Hall. The roof was damaged in that hailstorm that we had last year. And hopefully that will be, uh, picked up by insurance. I'm a hundred percent sure on that. Um, I just wanna thank Sean Fugit, our maintenance, uh. Uh, Department Director for his diligence and, uh, working to present us with best options going forward on replacing the roof of Star Hall, as you know, it's a historic building. Um, and very important to our community. Uh, and lastly, I just wanna plug the museum gala on Thursday. It's a great fundraiser for the museum, a super fun. Time up in the last couple of years, uh, and also they're having a continuing fundraiser on Friday at Star Hall where, uh, there will be. Uh, Clay Jenkins will actually be presenting as a, uh, as, uh, Robert Oppenheimer and. Forward to see, uh, what he does with that. Should be fun. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, y'all. Mike.
Again, end of the month's pretty easy for me, but several of you have been out of town and I've attended quite a few meetings for you. I forget the acronym, SULAG. Is, yeah, I, the triparte meeting, there's several of them. I attended that for Bill. Uh, one thing that came out of that was really happy that, that a local. Loan, uh, a grant alone, uh, was given to actually a Moab City resident and will be. Offering his services sooner than later with, uh, following that. Uh, that was great to see where that money actually came from and where it's helping our, uh, community, even though it's, uh, the entirety of. Um, I mean, that, it goes all over the, uh, state of Utah, uh, that board. Um, attended, uh, meeting with Trish on this, uh, Housing Subcommittee. Uh, continuing topics, that's why HDHO is actually a discussion tonight. I wanna take that, uh, that. Uh, conversation, uh, to the totality of our Housing Subcommittee and see if we can get that. Move forward with our planning commission. Uh, I also attended, uh, a rec board meeting. Uh, Recreation Special Service District meeting, uh, to talk about our, actually discussion item number two and their participation in. Helping the arena, uh, get farther in, uh, half the funding on the arena ask. Uh, you'll see that coming up here in a minute. I had a meeting with, uh, over at BLM offices. Uh, to talk about. Uh, the Dolores Triangle, um. What's that? Yeah, uh. Uh, it was, it's new to me. It's very interesting seeing why and. Who cares? Uh, who cares and why and? Why it's even being looked to be shut down or left open? It was really interesting to see all that information about. The entirety of the Dolores Triangle and. I thought I had been everywhere in Grant County and I can only say that I have not been everywhere in Grant County. They're, they. They talk about every trail, road, cow path. Uh, they talk about everything in those meetings and that was very interesting to see. Uh, but that's it for me.
Very. Hello, we are such creatures of habit. Every one of us go like this. We should have these removed. It wouldn't be that hard. They would look better. It would look better. Uh, as, as Evan and Jax's, the end of the month is really quiet for me. I did attend, uh, Canyon Country Partnership and, uh. Trish did such an excellent job on reviewing. I, and what I was going to say is I'm gonna send people, the entire commission, the minutes. From that meeting. That way, if there, you, you go through it and if you have any questions, that's part of the minutes, you can either contact that. Agency or Trish or myself, we might be able to answer your question. Uh, we did go to the Utah Raptor State Park and Trish mentioned it as well, but, uh. It's been a long time coming. And I have to echo what Trish says, that Tony was instrumental on having this look at it. And we also had a lot of help from our. Two times past previous, uh, head of the Moab Travel Council, Elaine Gisler. Was really helpful. She was helped, she helped us get grants. I mean, yeah, so, uh. Anytime something like this starts to come to fruition, it's not. An individual. It's a group of people who work really hard together on a common goal. So I'm looking forward to when, uh, the park opens officially. You can go in there now, uh, the. The, uh, visitor center isn't quite open, but you, you know, it's, it's getting there, but the houses look great. The houses, the, the employee housing looks great. The campgrounds look wonderful, uh. It's, it's exciting to see. And, uh, uh, Mark. I mentioned it in the past, but I wanna mention it again, if you don't have it prepared for tonight, if the next meeting. I have people oftentimes asking me where we are in the process of having our Spanish Trail. A bike path, walking path. It's, uh, we've, that's another one that's been a long.
It's, we, that's another one that's been a long time in the coming. And to me, it's, it's not only a lovely thing that's going to be there, very convenient. It's also a safety issue that we, we need to make sure that that project is moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, Mike. I didn't want to cut in. I just wanted to update Mary directly here. The bids have been looked at for the pickleball courts, and they have been asked. Six are in plans, eight total pickleball courts were asked to be included in the bid.
And I think we are supposed to use these because they can hear us.
Right. These still project Mary out in the outer area.
I was really excited.
Go ahead. Yeah, I'll go ahead and make this quick. So on the twentieth, I went to a Gwissa meeting. One of the biggest things there discussed is they're going to be looking at a rental for Voices Electronic, put up a new tower up there on Johnson's up on top. On the twentieth, I went to an end tab goals meeting. And then Alex Borchewski, he'll be presenting the goals that came up out of that committee at the next end tab meeting. I think that's on April eighth. On the twenty first, I met with Nina Pace after, yes, just following up on our DC meeting. One of the things that came out of there and kind of speaking to what you had said, Trish, is she said that the lease for Resource Boulevard is up next April. Right? And they're actually hopeful because they're seeing other essential leases being renewed here in Utah. So that, that was some good news to hear that. On the twenty fourth, I met with Joel Brown and Larry Ellison in a mobile office. Mike Currie was there, Commissioner McCurdy was there, and Lacy Shumway. It was nice just to talk about what's going on here in Grand County.
Thanks.
Yeah, from USU. Yep, she was there. On the twenty seventh, I came on in and worked with admin here, Mark Kiner and Quinn, and we got the RFP together for the marketing agency. That got put out on Friday. I really want to thank them for all their work and their experience getting that done. That was, that was a big task, and I want to thank you guys. Are you still here? It's gone. Okay. I know that. I really appreciate all the work. So yeah, that's I got out on bonfire on Friday. On the thirty first, it was yesterday, I went to the chamber meeting regarding Archer's Reservation System. Cassidy Jones presented out there, and they came up with some short term and long term goals. You know, there were a number of suggestions, you know, anywhere from revoking or suspending the reservation system and making changes to the system that we're up. Then I also worked on the letter of support for criticism bill on having the um, property right then transferred into the county. When I also noticed that the city had their letter passed through the city as well, so that should put us all in pretty good shape for that.
Thank you, Brian. Melanie.
All right. I attended a Colorado River Gap monthly meeting for Bill, while he's out of town. They discussed different billing ideas. It was very interesting. They talked about timeline. It's construction starting April twenty twenty six. The Sand Flats Recreation Area Storage Committee, we previewed a night sky video, which encourages visitors to come and see our dark skies. In all of our parks and also Sand Flats Recreation is going to try to get that theme designation as dark skies, and so it encourages people to go up there. Jen Jones from the BLM gave us an e-bike update. They said that great response to the process, and the scoping report is now available on e-planning. And it's in the drafting stage, and we should see something released in late spring or early summer. Last Tuesday, I was in Green River for two meetings. We had the Four Corners Mental Health. Exciting news is that the twenty-four seven crisis receiving and social detox center is now open price. So that's, that's a great resource. The Southeastern Public Health Department meeting was a little bit sad because we talked about had a discussion regarding COVID funds, and that they were informed that these, these COVID funds have been terminated and they had to return them, which that was two jobs. And so unfortunately, they had to let two people go. One was in price and one was in the lot. And they're being paid by those COVID funds. So they do have a position that is going to be opening, so hopefully one of those people can do that. So really the job loss is one. The last Wednesday, I was attended the agenda review with Mary and Bill online. And then later that day, I was back for the Economic Opportunities Advisory Board meeting, where we had over fifty intend to apply applicants for the RCG and RC OG grants. We're continuing on, on to get more information from the top thirteen. But all applicants are still able to complete a full application, even if they were not selected at for additional exploration from the board. For, for future consideration, I'd like to explore the possibility of reallocating the salary amount for the assistant engineering position for for a part-time economic development position, as we currently have no applicants for the engineering position, and we really need that full-time engineering or an engineering firm hire before we fill this part-time position. And I think having over fifty applicants gives me for economic development position. I also attended the chamber meeting with Cassidy Jones on the Archer's Time to Entry Discussion, and there was a lot of great discussion. Many identified the most pressing issues with the reservation system, as well as technology needs and long-term ideas. And one thing I want to talk about for another future consideration is legislative subcommittee to get us back together to review these bills now that they've been passed. And I think maybe that would be after I returned from the UAP training May first and second, where they really break those bills down. So I have a lot more to share. Thanks.
Thank you, Melanie. I'd like to go back just to Mike's comments a little bit about the revolving loan fund. That loan actually came out of the four hundred thousand the Grand County put in, and it is specific to residents in Grand County. And I believe it went to a Mr. Hurley, if I'm correct, but so it wasn't out of the larger pool, not necessarily larger amount of money, but there is another pool that multiple counties can pull out of that. That loan came out of the money that we set aside.
The whole economic development money.
Yes, exactly. People are back with Chris Better said that up. So I just wanted to clarify that one. And then also, we did receive an email today, and there is a Raptor State Park Cultural Exhibit Preview on Wednesday, April twenty third, and that's was an invitation to us, but that's open to the public as well. So it, it isn't the grand opening yet that we're all hoping for, but there is that cultural exhibit preview coming up. And then just on the discussion around the raptor, I'd also like to mention that Michael List had a big part in the appropriation of funds to help finalize the bike path from where it ends at, I believe, the Giants, the dinosaur park there, all the way out to the Raptor State Park. He I believe was working with Steve Elias and then a couple others. I think he got portion of like one point three million appropriated towards that bike path. And then the rest of it's coming out of the same fund that's going to finish the gap or the same body down on the river. So that, that's, I believe, is almost a ten million dollar cost to get that bike path all the way out to the Raptor State Park. So multiple people working on those appropriations. I did attend via Zoom this meeting that Mike talked about, the Dolores TMP, and there are a plethora of roads out in that area, and actually, the meeting was centered around roads that had been identified that weren't previously on their tribal management plan. So there'll be an opportunity to go out and actually review some of those they, new roads that they basically found. Yeah.
Did you catch the email today about that they were going to be canceling that?
They're canceling a portion of it. Yeah, yeah. The Dolores TMP, because of the administration changes, part of that TMP is being canceled. So I, I don't totally know what it amounts to, but I, I do believe they're still going to go out and assess the roads, is my understanding. So and then that's all that I was a part of. I have been into the month and away for a while, so mine is fairly short as well. So we can move on to our county attorney.
First, just to let everyone know, April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. This is why you'll see pinwheels, blue pinwheels across. This is another month to raise awareness for a really dark thing that happens in almost every community. We wish it didn't. On March twenty fourth, Andrea held the Corey Jewel Jensen, who provided a lot of information about the child sex abuse that happens throughout the country, in this community as well. Provided two sessions, one to folks that are involved in the industry. A strong shout out to Sea Haven, the Multicultural Center, Moab Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, they all had a good number of people that attended. The evening presentation of it wasn't as well attended. It's a hard topic for folks to go to. I want to thank Commissioner McCurdy. He was the only commissioner that attended that project. And that presentation, we stressed, really wanted to have as many people go because this is a type of topic that people do not want to talk about, and it happens, and it's very easily ignored. It is a type of horrendous thing that happens in this community. We've already had a jury trial this year that resulted in a conviction for a sodomy case on a child. No one wants to talk about this stuff. It's exceptionally uncomfortable. This is why I continue to bring it up, because these things do happen. And so I, I really think Andrea did a phenomenal job putting that on. I want to thank the community members that showed up. They were engaged, and I was really excited to see that. I attended the EEOAB grants. I want to give a shout out to Commissioner McCandless and to Commission Administration. They advertised this grant. And the result of that was fifty, fifty plus applicants instead of the year before, which is two, and the year before, which was one. And so a massive shout out. I complained openly that I said it lacked transparency. I complained for two years about that. This year, they advertised it. There were fifty plus grants. That's phenomenal. I want to thank Com Admin again for doing that. Next, just a note. This body can't take action in closed session. A community member indicated that we should make actions in closed session. That's not how the government works. But what requires us to be in person, make these decisions in person. The commission can't make decisions in closed session. I wanted to correct that. Lastly, we're going to be giving out monthly legal trainings to the chagrin of myself and Chrissy Hoffline, who's here. We're going to be hosting monthly trainings. They'll be exciting topics. I know everyone is going to be very excited. Rules of Commissioners will put on there. Grandma, Oma, conflicts of interest, contracts, statutes. We're just going to start doing it monthly. We'll probably do it either in Star Hall, Mission Chambers, or the Grand Center, depending on the topic. And try to maybe make some of them when Chrissy and I were talking about it, we talked about potentially doing maybe a little bit on like for the age, the council, age on council, it's the, that word called.
Aging on council.
Aging on council. But make some of those more interesting, like maybe some topics like elder reviews or some other things that might be more connected and try to build up some, some excitement. I might offer food to try to get people to go, but the goal is to have them monthly. They'll be open to all boards, any volunteers, the county, of course. And so I know there's been a call for those things, and so we'd love to host those things and put on exciting PowerPoints and everyone the fun law. Yes.
More than three of us attend, especially when it's talking about our
If we, if we know, if there was such amazing amount of input, probably, actually, it probably wouldn't need to be. It probably wouldn't be unless you guys are going to have, probably not, no. No, not for Oma, not for Grandma. No, likely not. It's, it's going to be disconnected from that. You guys won't be decision makers there. It'll just be a presentation. It's not going to have anything else except for me presenting. There may be questions from the community. Last time we put it on, there's been very light amount of questions. But I, I've heard commissioners really want that. I think we can get enough topics for probably about an hour-long session, maybe during a lunch hour, and maybe throw in people with food or something. That's everything right now.
We are talking free food, right?
Oh, of course. Yes. Yeah, we would. I mean, free is the, it would come out of the county budget somewhere, so free and not free.
All right, Gabe, on to you. Thank you.
Nothing right now. Thank you.
All right. Administration, Mark, anything?
I don't have anything.
All right, we're golden. Then we can move on. Let's see, time, we've still got about fifteen minutes before our six o'clock. Public comment period. It looks like we could probably get
We can't do number one.
Number one.
We can skip to number two.
Okay, also there's no reason we can't skip to number four, correct? Because I know we have people waiting on that one. Why don't, why don't we start with number four here and let let's get that one out of the way if we could. And that is the approving letter to the state of Utah regarding billboards located at eighteen sixty-three North Highway one ninety-one. Mr. Stocks.
We lost everybody loose there.
It says file was invalid.
No, no, just, that's just the, the summary of it, but I'm going to tell you guys background information. So essentially, and, and the applicant's hearing, if he, if he wants to give his position, I'll tell you what the county, uh, can decide to as well.
Can you go first?
Yes, sir.
My name is Jay Wee Evans. I own Evans Billboards. First, I appreciate you moving me up so I can get home in the snow back to Provo, so I really appreciate that. And I appreciate you taking the time to, to hear me. I apologize first. This is really a UDOT and Evans Billboard problem. And UDOT should have already issued the permit through the process of the legislature. Somebody at UDOT is pushing this back to Grand County. And we don't think this is Grand County's responsibility unless they are interested in putting ten nine A five one thirteen, which is in the domain. And the domain code in the billboard, I can go over and explain it to you if you would like. I, I don't think that's the county's intention, and if it is, just please let me know so we can go down that road. I don't think that's the intention. We, I want to tell you, we recognize, we're the ones that recognize that we had a problem. And every four years, which some people don't understand, every four years, you're supposed to pay a fee to have the billboards in the state. We found that problem when I didn't pay them money, and I was going, where that, that billboard didn't have its check app to it. So I started to research it, and we had made a mistake. But UDOT had made a mistake. The predecessor, the predecessor to us that we purchased it from had made a mistake, and then UDOT had made a mistake, and then we had made a mistake. And in the code, it gives us the opportunity to correct the mistake. We just have to fill out a new application. And I'll lead you right to where it is. The code says in the rules. Let me pull it up. I tell you the code, where it says and everything, but the rules say we have to have a valid building permit to accept the application. Well, we have valid building permits. UDOT has them. UDOT gave us the valid building permits, but they won't recognize it's a valid building. They, and that's what the code says, so we can go back to UDOT and argue, but the easiest way to do this is the easiest way to do this is they want one sentence taken out of the letter that you have already written. Don't know if you've read that or not. And if you have, that the county wrote a letter which it needs to, which, which they appreciate. And we think if you take this one letter out and
It's in the final paragraph, the second to last sentence.
That's correct.
That the county believes the billboard, that billboards has, have maintained state-issued permits and qualified as a non-conforming use.
Yes, that's, that's where you just need, we just need that taken out of the letter. And then the ball's back in the count, I mean, state's court where it should be. This is an issue between me and UDOT, and UDOT has pushed me down here to solve it. I'm here to solve it. Do you have any questions?
Is smart stance.
So one of the, one of the questions that we have is whether, whether the billboard has been in continuous use for the entire period of time. And, and so where we were originally, when we sent out the letters, we indicated if we believed that they had the permits all the way through. There may have been a period of time, and that's why we're, we're before the commission, whether that billboard would have been operating continuously. And if there is that break in that time period, that's where it makes it harder for me to suggest that they are in compliance without coming back before the commission. And I think the applicant fairly notes, there was a period of time that there was a lapse. And, and so that's the question for the commission is.
No, go ahead, please.
Oh, that's the question for the commission. If they view that lapse as being sufficient to terminate or to resist stating that they've been in continual operation of the billboard, and if they're in that continual period of compliance, then they're grandfathered in, and they'll continue to issue permits.
I can, I can comment on this. So the billboards, even if I can, I can comment on this. So, uh, the billboards, even if we take the vinyl off today or advertising behind it or advertising days in. So this is where the separation comes from Grand County to the state. There's two separations here. When in the land use ordinance, so we can prove beyond a reasonable doubt, you can go look under the vinyl, you'll see days. You'll see the days is painted on there. That is an advertising that's never went away. The advertising has never went away. And in your code, it has to be gone for a year. So we can prove that without a reasonable doubt. The, the way that it works, when the building permit is issued on a piece of property, that becomes the rights of the property. And to lose that right in your code and in the state code, now this is not the state billboard code. This is the, the land use code. Those rights have to have not been used for a year. And they have always been used. So we have the right to the billboard and that, I believe when you do the, if you do the research, that's unquestionable. The only questionable part is when my predecessor received the billboards when it was on his property and he received the billboards, we were, he was supposed to fill out a transfer that he didn't understand to transfer it to UDOT. If, and then UDOT had a responsibility, ninety days after this, after every four years, if the billboard is intact and UDOT has to find out and send a letter to rec, and I can read the code exactly what it says, but the bottom line is, UDOT had to send a certified letter that said you have not applied for the permit. UDOT did not do that. And then I came along and I thought my team had filed within the ninety days and I figured out that it had not. To rectify that problem, in the state code, it says we have to apply for a new permit. And we've made, they keep moving the goal line. They're done moving the goal line because I meant we're at the limits. But they've moved the goal line and the only thing we have to prove at the state level to get the permit is two things. Why don't I read the code, what it says? So we can, so we can dial that in. Because this is what, this is where the state stand and then send it back to us. It's in. I will be, I can't read. But the state code says in R three, R nine through three dash two dash six A. Each application shall be accompanied by a valid approved building permit or a special use permit from the local governing authority or a written statement from the authority indicating the building permit or special use permit is not required in its ordinance for the proposed sign. So when you apply for the application, you have to, if each, I'll read it again. Each application shall be accompanied by a valid approved building permit. They have received the approved building permit. The signs were built and are approved building permit. But they have came back and made their own rule, which they need to go to the legislature and change if that, I'm sorry, I'm getting upset. They should, if they should, if they want to change the rule, their job is to go to the legislature and get it to say current. It doesn't say current. They wanted to make it say current. Anyway, I've said it.
So essentially from the, from the position of the state, what they know in their letter is that the permit was closed off and terminated in June twenty seventeen. Request for the permit holder in realty. And there were no fees for the permit that had been paid since. So it was the state's position that they had, did not. They didn't have a permit at that point. Pursuant to our codes, if they didn't have a permit, the sign wouldn't have been compliant or been out of compliance. And that's, that's the concern that one could have. So the lack of permitting. But that's, that's the issue. We originally thought that it was sufficiently in compliant until we noticed that they didn't have permits. That's why the state kicked it back. We sent the original letter that's in the packet. So the question is whether, uh, mission wants to approve it with having missed the permits previously. Now, of course, the applicant disagrees with that analysis of it. Uh, but it's up to the commission to decide. If you guys want me to correct the letter, I can remove that call. I can send that back out. Um, if the commission didn't want to allow that to continue, there is an argument, um, that we could state that they weren't in compliance. I, I think the applicant's already getting clear that he would strongly resist that. Uh, and so that's where we're at.
Mike. I'd like to make a motion approving the letter to the State of Utah regarding the billboards located at eighteen sixty-three North Highway one ninety-one. With stated amendments.
Removing that.
Yeah.
Second to last sentence.
Okay, motion by Commissioner thirty second by Commissioner McCandless. Do we have any other comments, remarks, anybody? Doesn't look like it. All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Passes six with Mary McGann. Absent. All right, thank you. So let me go back. Yep, safe travels. Thank you, guys.
There is at least three wrecks on, on cylinder.
Oh, really? Thanks, thanks for getting me out here.
Maybe spend the night in Green River.
Oh, we've still got a little bit of time here. I am going to move to number five. Then, which is a resolution changing the name of Canyonlands Healthcare Service District to Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District. Mission Administration.
This item was brought up that originally we were missing the officially in the creating documents, it didn't have the word special in front of the, uh, special service district. Special service districts are different than regular districts. So we're correcting that.
Okay, Trish.
I move to approve the resolution changing the name of Canyonlands Healthcare Service District to Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District.
Right. Motion by Commissioner Hadeen, second by Commissioner McCurdy. Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Passes unanimously. And we.
I didn't take enough time.
On to item seven, which I believe is going to be a fairly quick one. The ALJ contract approval. And we're just kind of winding down time here until we can get to the six o'clock citizens to be heard.
So this ALJ contract, um, this is a, a service that's provided by Mr. Katton. He came as a recommendation, uh, from the attorneys we use for HR issues. This is the ALJ. They would charge two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. They would be enlisted in the event that there was some issue that was appealed from the department head. Then HR, then they would go to the ALJ instead of coming to the commission. So that's the contract that we had entered or that we would suggest entering into. Um, it's similar to the ALJ that handles, for example, the, uh, planning and zoning. That's great call. That's great call. Different people, different people. This is Katton. He would perform that same administrative law judge role. That's what ALJ stands for.
Mike.
Can't speak slower than this. Uh, I would like to make a motion. I move to approve the contract for as needed services of administrative law judge services by and through Caton Loth. Uh, PC pursuant to subsection seventeen dash thirty-three dash four point five, the Utah Code.
Second.
All right, a motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Martinez. Do we have any comment on this one? Jacques?
How is the, what's the process of, of finding one of these? You said it was recommended by Mr. Call.
Yeah, so there, these are on a need, uh, as needed basis. It doesn't happen very often. We'll end up paying um, probably a few grand every, every year, maybe. Their services. This is a provider that does it for a few other counties. I think she does, um, uh, Carman County and, and Emery County. Um, but normally just word of mouth, that's, that's how, if we wanted, we could put it out for a uh, for a bid. But likely this is going to be a service that we're going to use once and for all. It's similar, like I said, to Mr. Call, where there are some years we don't even use him, other years we use him. Uh, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour is a fair and reasonable rate. We're lucky we have the rate that we have for Mr. Call as a hundred dollars an hour, which is a steal, um, in that other context, but it's, it's asking around if there was any, uh, any concern about this individual. We could reassess this in the event that they do an appeal and it's like last time, uh, commissioners could attend. And if they didn't like the demeanor and professionalism of that individual, we could place them.
In terms of references?
Yes, he does.
Awesome. Thanks.
Anybody else? And one other note, in his original contract, um, he had called himself the Hearing Officer. We've gone through and corrected it to the Administrative Law Judge. Well, filling the same role except for in our, uh, policies and procedures employee handbook, we refer to them as an ALJ instead of a hearing officer. But they're fitting the same role.
Great. I'm super stoked to have him on board.
Think we all are. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Martinez. No further comments. I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Passes unanimously. And I think that we are close enough here.
Citizens to be heard.
Citizens to be heard at six o'clock, so we can start here. In the lobby, if there's anybody new that wasn't here for the previous citizen to be heard, feel free to. Sign in. Do we have anybody online? It doesn't look like anybody. Anybody new? Okay, well, we will move on then. We will go back to number one. The public hearing for the general rezone of McKnight subdivision. And the applicant is here as well. Welcome to come up.
Good evening.
Evening.
Start, um, this is for a general rezone for nineteen point two seven acres in the McKnight subdivision. This is over Omni Source Boulevard. This area is particularly called out in our general plan as a neighborhood center. What that means is a neighborhood center is a compact mixed-use district that primarily serves the immediate and surrounding areas. This is one of two in the entire county that is called out in the future land use map. Prior staff had kind of recommended that they wait for the map to come out and then these, um, applicants would apply for this rezone. I do, I don't like to make a neutral recommendation. I am on this one because I do agree with their conclusion, but how they got there is um, not the way I would, uh, sort of analyze it. Um, I have spoken with the applicant at length about why I think would be unofficial for them to wait for a new land use code. They don't want to do that. Um, I think that with a new land use code, with an adoption of another map, this would have additional entitlements, um, specifically to mixed use, probably more density, um. But they don't want to wait. They do want to go forward with the mixed use, um, sort of plan within this, um, portion of the bank subdivision. So with that, um, everything is lined out in the staff report. Um, there is a proposed motion. You guys won't be making a motion next, so we'll talk about that part. This is the legislative decision, so as long as you make findings, you are welcome to go either way on this. Um, did you have any questions for me before I give it to the applicant?
Maybe just noting for commissioners, when we look at item one of these subsections, it has the recommendations for the motion, but if we look at item two, it kind of has, uh, possible answers, just.
Right. They won't be making a motion tonight, so I would probably go into that next meeting. Do you have some questions for me before I see you?
Just a quick reflection. Uh, we, this is, I know we can't use our future land use plan as the rec land use code, uh, but in that this area was stated for mixed use?
Yes, it was. So the future land use map that was adopted would show this as a mixed use sort of area. So the closest thing that our current land use code has to that is general business and that is what they apply for. Um, the department is generally supportive of that. I just, this would be specific, um, in the future and this would prevent them from possibly reapplying for the future zone that exists over this, um, and there's a good chance that it would just, when we adopt the new land use map in conjunction with our new land use code, that this would automatically just be incorporated into it. Uh, and they would have the option to track it if they.
You guys want it now instead of later? I understand.
Yeah. This is my turn.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, thank you for that. I don't disagree with that at all. I mean, I think context on this is important, um, because, I mean, for starters, this was approved in the late sixties as an industrial park. The document, the subdivision documents, it's, it's titled the McKnight Industrial Subdivision. And so it's an industrial park that was, you know, it's kind of built out the way it is. It was originally zoned general business, these parcels. And so, you know, at least from our standpoint, we look at this as kind of starting back at square. It was a subdivision approved and designed for commercial activity. It, it, it received a zoning amendment debt to multifamily, um, quite a while ago. And when we first engaged with the county planning office, uh, I think Alisa was heading the office at the time. You know, we weren't really able to, uh, come up with good rationale for that zoning amendment that occurred then. And as some of you are aware, multifamily residential is undergoing quite a bit of amendments since then. It's, you know, and it's, it's, it's got its issues. And so, you know, we've got this industrial park that was down zoned MFR. The owners are still paying commercial taxes on it. And so we're just trying to get back to center of, of the way it should be. I mean, that's, you know, been my position on it. When we engaged with the county and Elisa, it was, well, we're, we're working on this new plan. And we actually have that area identified for, you know, like a mixed use concept. And so we essentially just kind of married, like, you know, got on your track for this new future land use map and agreed to kind of pause our zone, our, our zoning amendment request for this process. Um, and so, you know, and as pointed out, the, the map, you know, points out the area or titles at a neighborhood center. And so we do understand that like i- in a perfect world, we wouldn't just try to, you know, jam general business into kind of a, an evolving land use code right now. But because it's, it's taken so long and because general business, we feel like is appropriate and it does, it's a pretty good fit. We're comfortable moving forward, getting back to general business now. And then we'll engage with you guys as you work towards finding new zones, you know, for that area. So that's really all I have to say on. Thank you. You have questions, Trish? Go ahead.
And you don't have to answer these questions. Just, um, I understand why you, you don't want to wait and, and this is, yeah, I, I mean, the, the goal is we've spent, spent a lot of time and a lot of money coming up with this future land use map and plan eventually. Um, and so we're just hoping, you know, that it'll all kind of jive. What do you envision there? Because I mean, it, you know, we're, when they talked about new centers, you know, of course they were, you know, pie in the sky, a little coffee shop and X, Y, and Z, but what, what do you envision?
Well, that's, that's a good question and I will answer it. So the owners are, it's the family trust, you know, that owns the subdivision and the, the, um, you know, they manage it, you know, the family of the original developer. And, you know, the primary goal is to get the parcels and lots with the appropriate zoning. So we can do something first. In terms of like, you know, we're selling lots to developers, you know, we may have, I mean, we'll see how it evolves. You know, we may have a development ourselves, but it's mixed use, commercial, high density residential. You know, that, that question came up from the planning commission while we were pursuing general business. And that's really the answer. It's, it's highest density residential.
Right.
Um, uh, and so, you know, targeting, uh, commercial spaces for small businesses, large businesses can be right there. You have office buildings. You have mixed use occurring right now in the subdivision with synergy. They have, they have commercial space, residential space. So we envision kind of more modern sophisticated version of mixed, you know, kind of classic mixed use in the area. I think part of what has helped us kind of get on the same page with the county on it is a rail crossing and a lot of the demand that's created there. You know, for neighborhood commercial, you know, that helps. Uh, and, and so, yeah, I think, you know, the need, a lot of the commercial and the residential needs really fit well in general business. You know, short-term rental is obviously not a a permitted use. And so this is going to have to find its way through commercial and residential demand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for answering that.
Anyone else? All right, so we don't take a vote on this. This will just stay open until next Wednesday, which I believe is April ninth at five PM.
Okay.
I asked for, uh, if anyone's here to make comment on this.
True. And is there anyone here? Yes. Caitlin, please.
Well, again, um, I am making comment on behalf of the Area Community Land Trust. Uh, we are generally supportive of this rezon, but a few people ask about our opinion, asked me to give a comment on this, so. Um, Royal Crossing is a mixed use development, we have three commercial-esque parcels in our master plan designated for childcare and community facilities. Um, so we have been thinking about and talking with the county since twenty nineteen, working on that master plan for more mixed use, um. As has been discussed, there's going to be three hundred units, um, I actually talked with Brian at the Future Land Use Plan. Workshop about, um, being supportive of this favorite center, so. Um, yeah, don't, don't have many observations other than that, but, um, we are good with this reason. And just wondering if there are questions.
Thank you, is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this? There anybody new online, so it looks like then this will remain open until April ninth at five P M, as stated previously. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to number two, discussion and consideration of the old Spanish Trail Arena Outdoor Arena and Pin Project. This book.
Thank you for having me tonight, so tonight, um, I have on the agenda, um, a project out of the arena. It was originally proposed to replace the pins at the outdoor arena. Um, as this was coming to light, um, and pulling in proposals. Um, it made more sense to put the new equipment inside the indoor arena that gets more use, and then pull the. Old equipment and put that outside, and I, I hate to call it old equipment, because. It's still good, uh, so utilize the equipment that we currently have and put it in the outdoor, um, area. To bring that up to par and safer, and then. Put the new equipment inside. Uh, so that is what our request is, um, currently the outdoor arena. Situation is deteriorating, it's unsafe, it's falling apart, it's hard for us to work on, it's made out of mostly drill pipe, and. It's just running out of room to weld on anymore, um. So it's, it's just tight, the, the. Bucking chutes don't open all the way, the roping boxes are not complete, uh, there's not a full steer run, I could keep going on, uh. We also had a couple accidents out there due to safety, uh. And we also need more pins, as you heard from the rodeo committee earlier this evening, uh, events are growing, and we don't have. To hold all the stock. The Special Recreation Board grants the arena, um. Funds each year to put towards maintenance projects, so I would like to take. The funding that I'd be using for our maintenance projects and put that towards this, which is eighty-five thousand, uh. This project did go out to bid, and we got two bids back, which, um, you guys were email the two bids, um, one. They came back as what was put out at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, and that would be to replace the whole outdoor, um, setup. And then the second bid is for a hundred and sixty thousand, and that would be the cost. If we put that equipment in the indoor arena and took that current equipment and put it out in the indoor, outdoor arena. Uh. And if we went with that option, I, I would only need seventy-five thousand to match, to be able to make this purchase.
Same better?
What's that, yeah?
Yeah.
We only got one bid. During the bid process.
Any question, Mary?
I have a question. I think Gabe would be able to answer it. Uh, with our, the new T R T. Uh, law that's coming in or what, how, process of which we can spend the funds, but we use, uh, transient roof tax to pay for this.
I think we would want to consult with our attorney and the state hours office to determine if, um, enact, like, uh, you know, investment infrastructure like this is serving to attract, uh, visitors, transient guests to the county, that's my short answer.
Is, I, you know. Personally, I, I, I like, yeah, I think. I support the project, I'm just concerned about that it's not within budget, oh, you know, that, uh. When we through a grueling budget process and. Now we're spending a whole lot of money. So, you know, I, I'm torn, because, you know, I was hoping that. It would make it real easy if I knew for certain we could. Use that, some transit roof tasks, because it seems like it would fall into it, because like the people that spoke before, their names were. Dawn and Krista.
Yeah.
Dawn and Chris, uh, you know, it, it sounds like it was. Bring in some people.
It is, especially with the program that, um, Legacy is doing, only seven arenas were, are qualified. Uh, for that program, and we are lucky enough to be one of those arenas, it's, it's a huge honor to be a part of that.
And so, you know. I, I know, I don't know where to, how to go from here, but, uh. It would be nice to know how, uh, where the funds were going to come from. You know, and that would help with the decide, the decision process, the deciding process, so. I guess we won't know until we talk to our attorney or the audit person. Correct, okay?
Yeah, I think that, that's, that's where I stand on that, yes, that's accurate.
Yes. Just one question, is there, is this real timely, I mean.
Yeah, we, currently, right now, I, I really don't know how we're going to house all these animals just to get through the P R C A, let alone. Just the safety factors that we're dealing with out of the outdoor arena. Um, along with the way the indoor arena pins are set up currently, when they're stripping animals. Um, they're stripping animals inside pins. So these cowboys are inside pins. With animals, and when I say animals, I'm talking bulls. So it's setups, let's say.
Yeah, I, I was thinking along the similar lines, and I think where that might come from is the, is the, uh, rec film convention. Part, I think with the new four fifty-six T R T bill, it looks like we have, uh, we're able to collect a lot more than that, it's not limited to simply, uh, twenty percent of, um. Of promotion anymore, but. It, to me, it feels, it feels pretty obvious that it does fall within establishing, um, recreation and speaking to bringing people in to our county from outside of the county. Um, so I, I would advocate for that, and I would be very supportive of funds coming from there, especially with more, um. Promotion coming, it, it looks like it's with the, with the numbers changing to forty-seven percent instead of thirty-seven percent, that there would be, uh, excessive funding there. If, if you weren't able to utilize that funding, then I would be more reticent, I understand the needs out there, and, um. But again, as we heard earlier in the, uh, in the discussion of, of, or the presentation by the clerk's office on funding. Um, it, it sounds like we're given a mandate to tighten our belts, and this doesn't really fall under that, um. The other thing I was going to ask, if Mike might know this sitting on the rec board, is what, so the eighty-five thousand that's coming from rec, what percentage of the rec budget is that, or is that? You, Andrew, you said, I think that normally that I've used for to help out with maintenance at the facility, it's like.
In maintenance, yeah, so.
What would make up for the shortfall then of maintenance that that money?
Well, it goes to a project of my, of the average choice where it's needed.
Okay. And is that, I sat in the war four years ago, so I don't remember super well, but.
So like last year, for example, I used it on the sound system and the lobby doors.
It's, but is that eighty-five thousand about what they give every year to us, I remember.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay, great, great, that was the question.
And, and it all depends on, on Pilt money and what they're giving.
Yeah, Michael, go ahead, and then Trish.
I, I know we've. Eighty-five thousand is no small ask. Uh.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand is no small ask, uh, no other ask. Has given me such direct, uh. Application of, of the funds, uh. In, in receiving the money back by bringing people in, uh, thank you for listing current events, uh, current events that use this area. And the future events that, uh, I'm reading that Fruda has already inquired, if they can come over.
Yeah, they would like to do a summer series.
Yeah, and this, this paneling would directly apply to that, and. Uh, with, the, to speak on Mary's timeliness question. Uh, our current rodeo this year will not be able to, uh. Contain the amount of stock that is, uh, simply being brought in, uh, to this year, so the timeline, I agree with all that, I hope that conventures, uh, rec film convention can be used. But without the timeliness of this, we're already affecting. Events that affect our bottom line now, uh, without applying the funds. Uh. Uh, we, we won't see the benefits of current events, so we'll hold this up for, if, if that potential, if we were to hold it up now, if we hold it up. Our current income, which there's not many things that can affect our current income.
Because last year, which was less stock, we were. Pulling things apart and. Make shifty and then.
And if everyone here remembers. The, the safety aspect, two bulls got out, two bulls got hit on the highway. It was because of the paneling, it wasn't because of. It wasn't because of people.
It was because of drill pipe, not panel.
It was because of, because of drill pipe, uh, being used to retain animals. The arena is looking to fix that.
All right, Commissioner Martinez.
I was next, sorry, I was after.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, um. Could we wait two weeks? So that, I know you don't want to hear that, I know you're giving me the look, I know. But it, I think it would behoove us to know if we can use some of that T R T money, and, and that would just allow us to have a solid understanding, because if we can't, I think it's a, it's a cakewalk.
Yeah.
You know, we are, and I know you know this, um. We're, we're, we're having, and I think it's, it's only the beginning, people coming to ask for money, and, and as you know, our revenue is not looking great. And so I think if we had the ability to just ask the state and to solidify that, it would make this decision much easier for everybody, I, I would assume. Um, because this is a bit big ask, I am in support of it, but, you know, I, I think it'd be great if, if the entire commission was in support of it. So that would be my ask, if you could wait two weeks, I know you don't want to hear that.
Commissioner Martinez?
I was just looking up the bill right there, and. You know, to Jock's point right there, I think there's, there's a line in there that, that's going to, that might cause, and we're definitely going to need an interpretation, right, it says you can't use items for section A that are also in section B. And so when I kind of look at that right there in that bill. Back up and look at it here. Right, so section A lists tourism, recreation, film production, and conventions. And then section B lists to pay for tourism, relic, uh, recreation, bill, uh, facilities in the county, including acquiring, leasing, constructing, furnishing, maintaining, and operating convention centers, exhibit halls, visitors, and museums, so there's going to be some confusion right there. I definitely think that we're going to need a legal opinion on which way that we're going to go on that one.
Right, right, right.
Just my general, uh, overviews, I completely support this project, and it brings people into the community, it's. It's a diverse thing, it's something that's a little bit different than we normally have, I, I truly support all events. And, I mean, uh, you know, my general recommendation is that we, you know, if we're on a time crunch with this, that we, that we go ahead and we try to figure out how to do this. Um, this seems more like an investment right here rather than expense.
Mike?
This, this question is for Gabe, actually, uh, Gabe, if we. We authorized or approved a purchase right now, uh, that would come from general fund. And then in that, if we find out. In review, that we can use rec film convention, can we instead write the check from that checkbook instead of our general fund checkbook?
Yeah, we can always make a correcting voluntary to source it from.
Because I too hope that it comes from. Rec film convention center. Uh, but I see it as, as to recite your words, I see it as an investment, even if it comes from our general fund, but I'd like someone else to pay for it, so.
Commissioner McCandless.
Isn't our, our film rec can, is not already allocated, though, so maybe we just be allocating it from someone else else, I would imagine it would come from capital. I mean, that's what I would think that it would come from, our capital, it's not our general fund, but. Anyways, I, I'd make a motion that we fund the seventy-five thousand dollars, and then, you know, I think the safety issue alone is, is a. So anyways, the safety issue alone is the spend, the reason we need to spend that money, so my motion is to go and fund that.
Thank you.
Second, and then I do have a quick comment real quick as well, so the, looking at the forward of the T R T, right, is one thing, but we also need to be looking at the reverse of the T R T too. So I believe that in the twenty percent that we had, so basically from Jan one to July first, right? We have that ability to spend that T R T money on O S T. So on that, on that rec fund bill, right, because the bill doesn't take effect into, so we're going to basically end up being, being stuck with two funds. We're going to have a restricted fund that says that you have to spend on, you know, the way the statute was written, written previously, how we, you know, had had it with thirty-seven percent. And the sixty-three, right, and then we're going to have the new bill, which is going to have the first two percent of the four or five percent, so, I mean, with that right there, I mean. I feel pretty comfortable.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, I, sorry, yeah, I'm frank, you, my best. I was actually going to say the exact same thing Brian said, I, I also think, if, if I'm not wrong, I remember budget discussions last year. And, and I totally could be wrong, but, but I think we have a fund balance in rec, don't we?
Yeah, we're, we're going to need to have some follow up with that, I can't speak.
Okay, no worries, I thought that was the case, um, I would be, as, as far as the vote goes, I know a motion's been made, I would be uncomfortable making that decision now till we, till we find out. About where that's coming from, because I would not be supportive of spending the money if it does not come out of the fund. Personally.
I, I'll add just a few thoughts and comments here, I, I agree with Melody. That this really sounds like it ought to be coming out, not out of the general fund, but. Out of our, um, capital. I'm not to say that. We can't use, I'm not for or against the T R T portion, I'm just saying this sounds like a capital expense to me. The other thing that I'd like to raise the question on is I know that we're coming up with pickleball courts. We're talking about these pins, and I think the archery is ongoing on, so I.
I'm working on a bill slowly, but surely, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to do.
The point that we've, we've got multiple things here at a time when we're hearing that our budget is in a negative.
Understand.
And so, I'd like to have. A little better picture overall of the money that's going to be asked, rather than just a. One time in this meeting, we're going to talk about pins, and then another one, and another one, what, what are the. Needs that, that O S T has for the next year that haven't been accounted for in your budget, that's concerning for me.
Are you wanting to answer that right now?
I would be glad.
Like, I, you're like, actually.
Uh, so, actually, I put all of that in my twenty twenty-five budget report, um, all of these projects, um. So I don't know if you wanted me to bring them individually, but the playground and the pickleball court have already been allocated and. Approved in prior, like, what, what was it, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, uh, so that's all. Been done, the archery range is, has grants.
We have a grant, yeah, and, and I'm trying to do it as cheap as possible, though, basically free right now, and so I, I don't think there will be no. There will be no.
Yeah, we're trying to do it off of volunteers and the grant money, so you should. And I say shouldn't, see anything for me as far as the archery, as far as projects, um, everything was put in my budget, so. Yeah, I'll be coming, I'll be coming back, but it was because nothing was approved as far as capital works. Yeah, I'll be coming, I'll be coming back, but it was because nothing was approved as far as capital works. So um, we still do have the fire suppression um that needs to be brought up. And um, I was told to bring that in. That will be coming at some point.
So so back to my question, pickleball courts has already been appropriated, zero dollars are needed there. We're just talking about the pins currently, the archery, we think that we're going to deal with volunteer and that. Money needed, so that kind of answers my question that you did raise then the. Fire control system. So I I guess it's just that. It's hard to one piecemeal these.
No, I understand. It's also a building that was built in nineteen ninety that has extremely high demands on. That have has a lot of safety issues. I mean, I'm dealing with twelve fifteen hundred pound animals that I have to keep in a in a cage. And make sure they don't get out. Um, so I'm just trying to bring all the safety concerns to you and get them repaired.
I would be supportive of pulling this out of capital. If we wanted to. Change our motion, but it looks like we've got three going here.
The motion does say capital. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me. All right, we'll go to Mary, Mike and then Trish. Oh, okay, Mary and then Trish.
Like I said, this was hard for me because I looked at money and I went, oh dear, well, it's going to come from capital. But at the same time, I I look at the safety issue. And we're lucky that when those cow, those bulls were hit last year, that a person wasn't killed. I mean, I I I it would be horrid. If something like that happened, I would never, you know, and so even though I don't, I. Wish we knew where money, you know, if it's going to come from capital or TRT, it looks like. Then, you know, hesitantly, I I will support this.
All right, Trish.
I guess I just want an understanding of our capital projects, like my my memory from the past is we've kind of had an ongoing list. And folks put things on that list and that's, I also just don't want to run over. Does it make sense? Like, it's like, if if we're slowly chunking through this list and prioritizing, they're prioritized. I don't want to run over the top of other department heads for that we're waiting for something. So maybe you could just help me understand that. Maybe that's not how it's, maybe that's not how we've had it laid out.
Was this on a capital graphics list that's considered possible?
That's good to know, thank you.
It was, it was in my.
Just going to step on toes.
But I think at that.
Oh, no, I get it. I had it listed there.
But I think at that point, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't sort of. Possibly approved or wasn't brought on the pre-authorized expenditure list.
All my stuff.
This is an uncompleted expense and, you know, had been considered as part of the pre-approved.
So if we do approve this now, we are going to still proceed with seeing if we can pick this out of, carve this out of TRT in some care.
That sounds like a plan.
Okay, that's.
I I want, I do want to make one comment about the capital projects general fund.
Yes.
Thirty-four as a relation to fund ten, which is the general fund. Those are actually fungible, so we use the capital projects general fund to keep the general fund reserve balance lean according to statute. Um, so we take out of the general fund and put into thirty-four. Um, technically, if our reserve balance in ten had come really low, we could take out of thirty-four back into ten. So it's kind of the same. It it's definitely, it's not really useful.
Can I make one more comment? We had um a waterline break a couple of weeks ago that I got called out on to handle um. And as I was taking care of that, I had to fill a trough because we had um a bunch of. Horses that came in and the pins after the incident with the bulls, my crew went through and completely rewelded everything. Did a full inspection on the outside. We did the best we could out there. Um, and as I went to lean down on just one of the railings to. Take care of the hose, the re- the railing broke. And that was just me leaning on it and I had five horses inside that, that one pin. It wasn't even a bull and they had just gone through and got the belt and I included that picture uh in your guys' packet of that one.
Okay, there's no further comment. I'll call for a vote on this one. Motion by Commissioner McCandless, second by Commissioner Martinez, all in favor. Opposed. All right, the motion passes sixth one.
Thank you. I re- I really do appreciate this.
I know, just know we're like in a, we're in a tight spot.
Yeah, no, no, I do like it and I appreciate it and this takes so much stress.
I know, and I know that I support what you do out there and I love what you do out there. It's just the hard, we're in a hard, you know.
No, I.
Tough here, I think.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate it and my crew appreciates it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And we will move on to number three, professional services relating to the airport director position, Commission Administration.
We have received several applications for the airport director position. Uh, this is a recommendation to allow professional services for a aviation-related specific firm. To perform vetting on the applications that we currently have and then bring a number back to us to interview.
Mike?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the engagement of this firm to provide vetting services related to the airport director position. And the name of the firm.
That would be ADK.
ADK. Uh, the ADK quote, or ADK.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner Martinez. Anybody have discussions? Mary?
All right, all right, let's begin, you know, this is this sent a lot, but from what I understand from our previous conversation, this is low ball. That it could cost us more.
The that amount, uh, which is less than nine thousand should be all that it would be. The only way it would cost more is if we require additional services after the first process of interviews. But we would bring that back to you all before we did that.
Okay, so. And it's just, once again, it's just like making me anxious.
Yes, Mike. And just for transparency's sake, this is to find, this is to help us find more qualified candidates for our airport director position.
Yes, it's it's using an aviation-specific firm. To provide vetting and feedback to the commission on six to ten, probably, uh, applicants for us to proceed with.
Okay.
But to to maybe respond to your question, it's not bringing in more, it's looking the ones we have now.
Who's the best of that? Correct, yeah.
And it's specifically because it's aviation, because we just don't feel like we have that skill set to really be parsing that out.
Yes, and and hopefully that will allow for a greater period of longevity.
Right, okay. I like that.
I like that.
All right, if there's no further questions, anyone, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Was that a yes, Mary? All right.
I I would stay since it's passed, that'll have to work.
All right, so that passes six with one abstaining, Commissioner McGann. Okay, let's see, we jumped around.
Please.
I think we're in six.
Six. Okay, amending the pre-authorized expenditure list, Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, so this this came up when we were going through the love contract, um, when we had the pre-authorization list there. There's there was actually no authorization to fund any type of paid advertising. Right? So everything that basically had been funded from January long forward was done outside of the contract. So this right here is just going to be allowing the department to actually go ahead and start putting some advertising out. So what they'll be doing with this is there's going to be two campaigns that we're hoping that they'll do. One will be a summer campaign and then one will be a fall campaign. And so this hundred thousand will come out of the paid uh our. Advertising um uh fund balance right there and just allow them to actually go ahead and start spending some. Because right now, anything that they come up with, they would have to come, uh, they would have to follow our purchasing policy. So, you know, any type of advertising that's over ten thousand dollars, they would have to bring for the commission, right?
All right, Jock.
Are we running over the TCAB board by approving this before they're uh bringing it to us?
Well, I don't think so, because they'll still be, they'll still be uh discussing these purchases with the TCAB board. Right, with the M-Tab board. Right, there'll still be discussions of how this, how these campaigns are are um. How these campaigns right there are built and sent out in the M-Tab boards.
And this is, this is obviously TRT promotion.
Yep, TRT promotion. Yep, it comes out of the advertising. So right now, we basically cannot spend anything over ten thousand dollars on the uh about that contract.
Right.
Go ahead, Commissioner McCandless.
So I'm, I moved to amend the pre-authorized expenditure list to include the hundred thousand dollars from the paid media. Mob Office of Tourism account, we've done advertising efforts initiated by Grand County staff. By May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, to encourage visitation in the summer and fall season, this is certified.
Okay, motion by Commissioner McCandless, second by Commissioner McGann. Any other comments?
Yeah, I guess my, I just, yeah, I guess I'm just confused why this isn't coming, right, from the department or, yeah, from the TCAB board. So I don't know. I I'm just confused about that.
Yeah, uh, um, in that meeting that I had with admin, when we were talking about the RFP, I did speak with Ben Fredericell, um. I know the director, and he asked if I would present this.
Okay, he asked you to present it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
All right, anybody else? Any other questions? All right, I will call for a vote. All in favor? Motion passes six with Commissioner McCurdy abstaining. I believe that that then moves us on to number eight. Consideration of a request for resignation of Planning and Zoning Commission Member, Commission Administration.
There had, I'm sorry, there had been a concern with bowls, uh, as far as impartiality of a board member. There was consideration at this meeting to be held on whether or not to request resignation of a planning and zoning board member. Due to that concern.
All right, comments, Mary?
Well. I'm I'm against this letter for many reasons. One is, I think. As a person who's been a professional and worked in in various places for a long time, that if someone. If someone you're working with makes some, does something that you're concerned about, that the step one. Is to meet and talk to them. And and ask them to cease or assist a certain behavior. Or or get their point on it, given them, giving them the opportunity to correct any. Behaviors that uh. You know, we are concerned about. I just feel like we missed a step with that. I think it's only uh. It's. Me, it's the right thing to do and it is also the compassionate and the uh. Way to handle situations is to always talk to the person. Give them an opportunity to explain and then ask them to, and then you you document that you met with them. You mean, you you keep a paper trail. You document, you met with them, you talked to them, you asked that uh when they post or whatever. Uh, that they, it is done in a, in this manner. And so I I just felt like this was pretty heavy-handed. When we could have, when I think it could have been handled internally. And it could have been handled with a meeting and just talking to them about our concerns with the with the board member probably and the chair. So I felt I felt it was uh jumping the gun.
Commissioner Hadeen?
Um. I mean, this is now the second agenda item in the last couple of weeks that I felt was really just. Not presented in a manner that exudes transparency and for years now, all I have heard. From even some people in the audience, transparency, transparency, transparency. And I feel, I agree, that's what we want our government to be. We want, somebody spoke tonight about, they want to be able to trust their local government. When you are given an agenda item like this, it is unacceptable. It does nothing but exude, we're covering something up. We don't want to tell the people what it is. And it's just, it's, 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 it's a disgrace, to be honest. And so as soon as this came out, I started getting calls. I sent an email, thank yous. To our county attorney eventually responded, but thank you, because I mean, I'm not saying he, you you didn't lapse in your response. I got a response, but it was like, I wanted the response from you, Stephen, because you're our counsel. Um. If we put something in these packets, we should have the guts, and I'm using a nice word there because I want to say something else. To back up, if we want to be aggressive in our actions, then we need to have the guts to to tell people what we're up to. That's what it comes down to. This is unacceptable. I had planning commissioners calling me saying, am I the person? You know, which is, so you put a whole volunteer board on edge, thinking they're the ones that are on the chopping block. So I had to have many discussions. I talked to three planning commissioners last week, four, sorry. I mean, it's, it's a disgrace. Let's, if you're going to do something aggressive, have the guts to lay it on the line and tell people what you're doing. And that being said, before we take any vote, we are going to explain who we're talking about and how this came about. Because there, it is not acceptable to do something this aggressive to our community and to somebody who's. Taking the time to spend her two, two, two evenings, in evenings a month. Planning commission is a big commitment. This isn't small. The packets are big, it's twice a month. It's taking the time to serve on a volunteer board and not have the grace to tell her why. What she did wrong. So the transparency, the transparency in this is just a disgrace. This packet, it's, that's just a disgrace. And then I want to kind of talk about what goes online, what's going on online. And I made this clear when we talked about this previously. As a commissioner, you put yourself, and I don't feel this way, that a planning commissioner should be put into this place, but as a, as a county commissioner. We're politicians, you know what? We get, we get the hell beat out of us and it's an expectation. You run, you're going to expect that half of the people in this community are going to agree and half are not. Welcome to the, this is politics. It's a tough game. It's not that fun. The amount of slander that I've taken online is a lot. And a lot of mistruths, I'll put it that way too, and a lot of just mean, mean, mean behavior. A planning commissioner should not have to take that. And I'll tell you, the person that goaded her in.
Get close to time limit if.
Okay.
Wrap it up.
All right. The person that goaded her does the exact same thing to me on a consistent basis. And I'm just kind of, kind of making that warning out there, people don't fall prey to him. Because he's mean, he's vindictive, he doesn't respect the fact that we're all sitting here. Putting ourselves out here, working our asses off for this community. As as that, as our planning commissioners are and do. This is a disgrace. And there is no way you're ever going to see me vote to remove a volunteer from a board or to run over a board's recommendation of a board member, which the planning commission just made a recommendation. And we ran over the top of it. I'm like beyond angry. If you're not get catching that.
Thank you for all of that. I'm, Jock, go ahead.
So thanks. I would, I would, I would agree with most of what Trish said, although I couldn't put it as well as she did. Um, I also want to point to, um, Oscar said it very well, this, this is setting precedent and. I think if we make this move, that we should expect uh. Follow-up types of move and 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 holding other folks to the same standards that we're presenting here. Um, going forward, that's a slippery slope and. Uh, I'm actually going to abstain from this vote because I don't, I I don't think it should have come before us. But I'm not going to uh make myself look like a hypocrite when I. The, it it comes from the other side.
Commissioner McCurdy?
This is to Stephen's talks, uh. Previously stated in comments, uh, why we have to deal this. Previously stated in comments, why we have to deal this in an open and public meeting. We talk about character, professional competence and physical or mental health of an individual. In closed session and we follow through that outside of closed session because it is required in. Per OMA to talk about it in an open and public meeting.
Yes, that's correct. So there, there are bases that you could go into closed session for certain items. There's never an obligation to go into closed session, but you discuss those things in closed session. And then a decision has to be made in an open session. That's the requirement. Nothing, no decisions can be made in closed session. So you can't vote on it. Because otherwise the community would have no idea whatsoever, because when we do a closed session, we cut the feed. We reject the public and have a discussion.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to comment on Trish's comments about, I'm pretty pissed off too. Anyways, I think that Everett talked about bullying and bullying and intimidation. I think that once someone gets up in front of an audience of two hundred and thirty people at a public hearing. And personally attacks the developers, the state and local commissioners. Having these comments reach newspapers across the county is different than just a conflict of interest. Oscar talked about setting a presidency. Absolutely. That is absolutely what I want to do. I want to bring back professionalism to this county and that includes setting precedents that members of our boards will not call out commissioners corrupt. Many in this community seem to think that speaking poorly and untruthfully about individuals is okay on both sides. And it's not. We need to reevaluate all the conduct on our boards and I would say also as human beings. Laura Long appears to be very passionate. However, this passion appears that it has become an obstacle to her being able to be impartial. I appreciate her passion, but it's clear to me that she can be impartial on that planning and zoning commission matters. This is not about being part of the King Creek watch or being an advocate for the land that she loves. She has by her actions and words created mistrust for the board that she's on. And I appreciate her passion. But that's just where it goes down is not being impartial. I did talk about closed session, Audrey brought up that we didn't talk about this in closed session. We didn't add the name for privacy purposes. We also reached out to the, the chair and the vice chair as well as Laura Long. They did not return the calls and so it's really hard to get ahold of them and let them know. But that's why for the privacy of her and to respect her privacy, to not put that out on, on the agenda.
Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you. So, you know, this is. This is hard because as she said, you know, I do respect Laura's, you know, passion that she has for this. You know, but, but this right here, it's, it's not so much about, you know, planning and zoning commissioners being critical of the commission. Right, or about them being critical of the King Creek development, right? This was a formal process right there, right? It was a municipal hearing. That these comments were made and then the online comments, right? And that's unacceptable because they were just critical of the process, right? But they were. They were, they were critical of this body in general, right? When, when, when I look at the, you know, the ethical considerations here, right? What, what the heart of that is, is, is that it's not supposed to create impartiality. Any way that we look at it, right? It's supposed to mean that when anybody comes up to this board right here, that they're going to be able to get a fair hearing. And when we have planning and zoning commissioners calling us corrupt. Right, at a, at a municipal hearing, when it says in their bylaws that they're supposed to maintain public impartiality.
Have I ever say that word?
Laura?
Yes. Pardon?
Yeah, we'll ask you to be removed if it continues.
One word.
Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Do more to do that.
Yes, yeah. So that's, that's it right there. You know, it's, it's the impartiality of this board right here. And the comments that were made both online and, and, and at that public setting, right? We're against that.
All right, I'm going to make some comments as well. And I see your arm up over there, Trish. You can let her rest. So I'll get to you when we. I, I do think. That the transparency of this didn't look very good. I will agree with that, but I do know that it was done out of respect for Laura Long. It was done out of respect for. The Chair. Man Cuso, and I honestly don't remember who your vice chair is. And I, I will speak to the letter that the chair wrote. And I appreciate it. I do see a conflict of interest statement. There is a place for that and I appreciate the fact that you have one in there, Tony. I believe that the. Individual that we're speaking about now stepped outside of her conflict of interest statement. And if the chair had made the statements that she had, I would be calling for you to step down as well. This body up here deserves some respect and when we appoint somebody to a board. That respect needs to be held. Intentionally putting a commissioner in danger at a public meeting, calling commissioners corrupt. False accusations, the, the list could go on and on and on and. There just needs to be some respect for the commission. That, that's the number one thing. And any commissioner up here. That will say that that respect isn't due, isn't doing their job proper. And that's a political ploy. I would expect all commissioners to want this commission body. Whether it's in the future and there's no Bill Winfield, or whether it was in the past and it was a previous commissioner. Curtis Wells that was up here. This body deserves the respect that we all fought to get here. And we saw the battle that you went through, Trish, to retain your seat here. And I respect the fact that you were able to do that. We are on opposite sides on regular occasions as far as our political views. But it doesn't go to the point that we go to the social media and slander each other. And I appreciate that respect out of you as I appreciate the. Professionalism that the chair on that board shows at the planning commission. I respect that. And I appreciate the respect that comes back. And that's the reason we're having this discussion. Is that we, we have got to hold this to a higher standard. So I will. Let this go around one more time if that's what we need to do, starting with you, Trish.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate because. Somebody spoke of her professionalism. Laura Long is extremely professional. In those, in, as a planning commissioner. And those outside of her obligations to the planning commission, she is allowed to. As we all do, we have the first minute amendment right to have freedom of speech. She's allowed that freedom. She was not acting. As a face of the planning commission, she never stated that she was a planning commissioner online. She never stated that she was a planning commissioner. When Jackson did, she did not. And so she has the right to. Say what she wants. But in the setting as a planning commissioner, you're not going to find somebody as eager and professional as Laura. And I greatly want to, and I said this when we've talked before. I want to inspire young people to want to be a part of their local governance. At her age, I said that I wasn't going to planning commission meetings or county commission meetings. I was drinking beer with my friends. Who knows what the hell I was doing? I wasn't at a meeting, I'll tell you that. And then lastly. I agree, Bill. We do, I never stated that it was okay to disrespect one another. That never came out of my mouth. But I also think respect is earned. You know? So I don't think it's demanded. I think it's earned. There's a lot of people that I have a lot of respect for. But they earned it. And Laura's one of them. For sure. I highly respect that young lady.
Doc?
I didn't have anything else to add, thanks.
Anybody else? Mary?
I. It just breaks my heart. That we've come to this. You know, this is my tenth year on this commission. And. That. And, and, and I've been in situations like you and it's awful. But it's also something we sign up for. We sign up for, we cannot. People can say things to us. That is slanderous and we don't really have the right to sue. I've spoken to you because we are. Commissioners, we put ourselves in that situation. That's. And, and it's, is it right? No. Is it fair? I really don't think so. I mean, it's, it's hard. I remember my son bringing me over mace because of the things that were being said about me. He was afraid I was going to be hurt. They tried to talk me out of riding my bike around town because they thought I was too easy of a target. And this person directly. Threatened my life. Didn't insinuate or put you in an awkward situation. I've had members of different boards disrespect me. Everyone on this commission at one point or another has or will. Be put in a situation. Where you feel you have to defend yourself either verbally or you have to protect yourself somehow. But to go to the point that we don't even talk. We didn't even talk to the person we're asking to resign. We didn't even talk to her. We didn't call her up and say, you did this wrong and you shouldn't have done this. No, we, we go boom. We want you to resign. And I, I, I think we're better than that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think that that's a hundred percent. That's why I want to create this precedence is that we don't deserve to be treated like that. That is not what we want from our boards, especially our board members, the people that are there. It's, it's a privilege, not a right. And just like being up here is a privilege, not a right. Voted in and, you know, to have, have the fear, you know, I was at that hearing and having. The two hundred and thirty people turn around, I was the only elected official back there and have people look at me like that. It wasn't fair. You know, Laura and I did have a conversation. We had a conversation. She could have apologized, but she just wanted to find out that she was a hundred percent right. About what she said. So, you know, if people paid for an ad that my name was on, then supposedly I took money from the developers. You know, which is not true. And then we have people that. You know, the people that were at that hearing are my neighbors. I went there to listen to them, to understand them and there was great points. And I, when I left and my daughter was outside and she's in her vehicle and it's dark outside, you know, I appeared for her. So having a board member put me in a position that's fearful is not acceptable. And that's, you know, I'm not really going to change my mind about it. If we ask for her resignation and she doesn't resign. I would hope that everyone on all the boards understand that this is a precedence that we're going to set.
Commissioner?
In part, I'm going to agree with Jacques abstaining and Trish's previous comment and Mel right there. I expect every board member to listen to this. Every special service district. I expect every board member to hold, be held to these standards. I expect that of us. I expect that of them. But just the same, it should be standard practice. This isn't supposed to be a one-off. This should be our standard practice.
Yeah, Laura, I, I am going to ask that you, that you do leave. It's not okay to be threatening commissioners and pointing out that the same young lady. I just, I just watched you and Melody as well just watched you. I, I, I am going to ask.
Thumbs up and she said that she's lying.
I believe she was asking if she could come up here and speak.
Yeah.
I will, she should have the right to do.
Actually insane.
I, I did think that she was saying that she was lying. Speaking to Melody and giving her a thumbs up. I don't think there was any threatening gesture made there at all.
I am married. I will comment on the fact that. Commissioner McCandless did reach out to Laura Long to discuss this with her. So there was a discussion made. This is not.
Not according to Laura.
The resignation.
Not according to Laura.
Not about the resignation, not about resignation.
Okay, but there was an attempt to reach out and have a discussion.
My understanding is this was a lot to do with comments online more than what it had to do. That she crossed the line there because like, you know, so. That was my understanding from our previous understand, a conversation that this was more about. The. Issues online than it was what happened in the. That's my recollection.
May I ask you about your conversation?
Sure.
So my understanding is that she did apologize to you right on the onset. Is that not true?
She wrote a letter, she wrote an email to me that came after, you know, the person who talked about the comments online. And I reached out to her and she wanted to see if, if an apology was due. And basically she was able to state that she felt like she was correct in the statement that she said during the hearing.
Did she apologize?
Tell me that she was sorry that I felt scared, that my daughter, I felt scared for my daughter.
I, I consider that apology.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not for the entire aspect of it, you know? But the thing is, it's, she's continued on. I mean, she posted online. It's continuing on. It's not stopping.
All right. If there's no further questions, I'll call for a vote on this for the. Motion. Do we have a motion?
We don't have a motion. Hey, so I won't call for a vote.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we ask comm admin to send a letter asking Laura Long to resign from the planning zone commission.
Motion by Commissioner McCandless, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. Further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote for a letter from the administration asking Laura Long to resign. From her position in the planning commissions. All in favor? Those opposed? All right, the motion passes four in favor. Two opposed and one abstaining. Commissioner Hadeen and Commissioner McGann opposed and Commissioner Hadler abstaining.
May I just reiterate one point?
Um, I think it's time to move on to the next.
Just know that board members better watch their backs online.
Thank you for that.
We'll be watching.
I can. Say that we are now to the approval of our consent agenda. And we will start with the approval of the meeting minutes. Then I will get, let me get in here. Sorry, I didn't have this up. Ratification taking. All right, we have a total bills of nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. With a total payroll of six hundred and six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. With total bills and payroll at one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-three. Dollars and forty-two cents. Also, we have an approval of a letter of support for Senator Curtis Congressional Legislation for the Umtor Project Transition Act of twenty twenty-five. Appointment of two applicants to the Grand County Fair Board. Approval of independent contractor agreement for the twenty twenty-five Grand County Fair. For Adam Calvert. Ratification of contract Mud Springs. Approval of fixed asset disposal, search and rescue vehicles to be scraped, sold at auction.
Well, salute.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner McCandless. All in favor? Motion passes six. One absent, Commissioner McGann. And that moves us then into a discussion item regarding. Discussion of the HDHO with possible revisions. Melody and Mike, I believe.
Want me to lead?
Sure.
Sure.
I'll. Is it in discussions? I've asked several participants and or members of the community to be part of this discussion. Is it okay to have them up?
I don't see why not.
Okay. Group, would you come up? If you're willing to speak about this too, so.
Yeah. You want me up there?
Sure.
Can I make a comment randomly? I guess I'm I'm and this is my own fault for not seeing this earlier on the agenda. I guess I'm I'm a little taken aback. Because we've been working within the housing subcommittee. We've had the grace of Ronnie and Ben Riley and Caitlin Myers and Laura Harris all coming. And stating we did a priority list and stating that, yeah, we want to do this. Ben has stated he's got all this stuff ready to go. And so I'm just, I felt like I'm a little backdoored here. Like this came out of nowhere and I thought we had had solidified a process in that housing subcommittee. And all of a sudden, here we are. So I feel I feel like it's a little um. It's dismantling that work that we've done. And I think Ben was a little taken aback and I think everybody agrees that there has to be some amendment of the process. I think we all agree to that. But I was just shocked to see it here now that you didn't honor that subcommittee's work and where we were headed. So that's I'm gonna kind of, I'm just gonna, that's my.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm gonna state that this is probably allowing that some of the committee. Subcommittee work to move forward and the fact that they put this on the agenda, we're gonna have a discussion about it and you're. Being against this discussion is noted.
Great.
All right, Mike, please.
Put it on last Tuesday. Talked about it in the Housing Subcommittee. I was. I am sorry that Ben uh. Hasu, uh, Housing Authority of South America. Uh, I'm sorry that he couldn't attend. He had conflict. Uh, as he's one, I mean, as a very large say in this. Uh, he gave a letter of support of our continued work. That's why I put this on this as a discussion item. Uh, to take these comments in. Uh, to, I mean, it's not just part of the Housing Committee. I wanted to get these comments out to the entirety of the commission and in front of the public to see the problems. Uh, that's why it's a discussion item and not an action item today. But I hope to further this discussion along into an action item. So we can move the project for for the people who are participating uh within the HDHO program. Uh, I kept this to the HDHO side. I do have a conflict. I am part of the AVO side of this discussion. That is why I'm not discussing that side right now. But in the end, this discussion goes to. Houses are sitting empty that are already constructed. It's unacceptable. We've got, we've got housing available. We need to get it. Marketable would be the uh quickest term I could think of there.
All right, um, Mary, I'd like to let them present the discussion and we can take comments afterwards. We have people that have. Been waiting a long time to be a portion part of this.
Yeah, I I'm excited about this discussion. I'm just I'm just disappointed it's tonight. Cause I did not see any of the material until just around. Between ten and eleven. And then I had a meeting and then I had another place to go and I've not had the opportunity. To delve in and really look.
People have to make decisions tonight.
I know, but I mean, I it would have made my part of the discussion better. Because I would have had the opportunity to study it and say, I'm confused about this. I don't understand that. You see what I mean? If I could have done some pre work, it would have been nicer.
Well, it's been there, Mary, since Tuesday, so.
But I just would like to say that we talked about having the agenda. And I don't know where the broad breakup happened, but we did talk about it. Having the agenda out. And that even commissioners weren't even supposed to put something new on the agenda at the last minute.
This this didn't go on last minute, Mary. This has been there since our agenda meeting. It's been there the whole time. I zoomed in from Nepal whenever I'm there.
Yeah.
Oh, I I would. They'll like to let them do the presentation.
Okay, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Melody, were you gonna add to Mike or? All right, so please give us your thoughts, folks. I know it's been a long night.
Well, I I didn't know that we were here disrupting and and creating problems. We're just here. I'm trying to do what the county wants to do and all the community wants to do and that's provide more housing. And um I know that it's been discussion for years and years since the HDHO. Came to inception, which was actually um one of my brainchild that I helped with the Housing Commission, Housing Task Force. Um, I collaborated with some commissioners at the time and a little bit um. Staff at the time trying to come up with ways to create. More employee housing. So I've I've known about it from the beginning and. It's had a lot of reiterations and Trish is quite familiar with the reiterations that it's had as well and. Trish, I'm sorry. I I hope that we're not offending you. We didn't know that there was.
I understand. No, you didn't know the process. So sorry. Yeah, yeah. You didn't know all this other work that's been going on.
And so from our perspective, we've been putting a lot of work into HDHO um on the ground. Working with consumers and with developers and private stakeholders. That have been working to fill these pro this product and sell the product and to um. Help community members come into housing and there is a lot of problems with the HDHO and we're just asking for a conversation. On how we can make it better and make it work. And um I understand that you're on a housing task force that is. Working towards that and I was asked to come and be a part of this conversation and we also. Went to the extent was um collaboration of vested parties to. Create some recommendations to give you a base to work with and the recommendations that we're giving you are. The true life problems with the HDHO and it's not that we're trying to annihilate your process. Um, we're trying to bring real life scenarios to you of why it's not working. I just wanna also state that I fully support deed restrictions. I have been an advocate and been on a soapbox for deed restrictions for over fifteen years. Um, I believe in them. I believe they're necessary and I know a lot of people in. My organization as Realtors don't believe in them, but I believe in them wholeheartedly. And I believe in the HDHO and I really want the HDHO to be successful. And um my biggest part of the changes that I'm looking for are in the actively employed household portion. Because everybody, I keep turning so many people away. And people who are part of our community that deserve to have this housing. And what we're finding is there are, it's so cumbersome that even people who qualify don't want to go through the the process, so. Cause it's so cumbersome. Um, we're finding that our non-restricted units that we have with the product, cause only twenty percent of this developer's product is non-need restricted. We're selling to locals because they don't qualify and they're, that's where they're supposed to make their profit. But they're not making their profit there because they actually want to house these locals, if that makes sense. Um, so in the actively employed. Uh, changes that I've presented, it's just a conversation. It's not something I'm asking you to change. I just want us all have a conversation about it. Every single one of these changes that I've asked for are human being. I've said, you do not qualify. You cannot buy one of these products. You cannot have this house. You cannot buy this. You can't get into entry level housing in Moab right now. And that's. Really where I'm at right now is really trying to not only support the private sector that's put them out, set themselves out there for risk. Um, and are holding this product and can't sell this product. Um, and the empty units that aren't housing people right now. It's also the people that like, I feel terrible that I can't sell them a product because. They don't qualify and they live here. And they work here or they've been retired here for ten years or five years or and I know what I know what the. The heart and the soul of HDHO is for actively employed so that we could help fill um. Everybody's positions, you know, at restaurants, at your tourism, that tourism um facilities, sorry. Operators. But when when we come to find out, this does not qual qualify for anybody who's working here seasonally. Like you can't fill your seasonal housing. You can't fill your transitional housing. You can't fit, you can't, you can't put in a traveling nurse. You can't put in an emergency room doctor. You can't put in the superintendent of the national parks for two months. You you, this doesn't work for that. And these are all people that we're telling no. So I I just, I would really like to open it up to a conversation of how can we please house these locals and get this product sold? And how can we please make HDHO successful?
I'd like to let our county attorney.
Sure, just maybe maybe speak to uh an example of things you want to loosen up just for a starting point.
Starting point would be that we would really like to change back to the original intention of the HDHO, which was not. Governing who owns the product, but who occupies the product. Um, that way a mother in Denver can buy a product and rent it to her child. Or you can have um someone who's looking to retire here in five years and they can come and work. Part time and make it here. We do want to change it from full time employment to part time employment or maybe a retiree that. Volunteers for sixteen hours rather than having to work thirty hours um. We would like to see more ability to make exceptions for healthcare workers, um digital teachers, um. Uh, emergency room doctors, um people that are working in the government. Um, whether they're here transitionally or full time or um we've denied people who uh work for the IRS digitally. We have denied people who work for the state of Utah's Tax Commission digitally. We have um denied people who are. Uh, work are are working San Juan County or Emery County because they don't qualify. Even though they may have residences in Grant County um. So I I guess I could be a little more. Go through my list a little bit more, but I think I've kind of summarized it pretty well.
And Trish, we'll get to you in a little bit. You missed it when you stormed out, but I'm gonna.
Let's go to the bathroom.
Present what it is that they have here and then we'll do comments afterwards, please. Thank you. If we could just continue letting this discussion happen that they've started.
And well, I mean, I'd like to make a recommendation.
I have my hand up.
I understand. Okay.
Again, Mike and Melody are at the start of this discussion. We're gonna listen to these people and then you can make your recommendation. Thank you.
Um, I think that Ronnie would like to talk about the financing issues that we're having. Um, I can have her take before in that regard.
Um, so I am on the Housing Task Commission as well. Um, so I wasn't surprised when I got a call, actually. Um, we have prioritized, we've been doing some priorities and on in the in the housing task. Subcommittees that we have. Mike did mention in the meeting that um Rachel had given stuff to the council and. It was going to be on the agenda in our task meeting. Um, but I was asked to speak after that meeting and I thought, okay, so here we go. So I'm gonna give you the lending side. Okay, just so just so you kind of have a background and then you can you can do whatever you want with it. Um. And I had to write it down or I'll just ramble. Nobody wants that. Um, so I'm Ronnie Schultz. I'm an originating branch manager for primary residential mortgage here in Moab. I've been lending in Moab for the last seventeen years. I'm very fortunate and feel humbled to be in this profession. Every day I meet with new prospects and talk about homeownership. With that, I get to face what it looks like to give an approval or a denial. The housing crisis is very real in Moab. We all know this. I'm not here today to advocate for one project. I'm here to advocate for all properties within the high density housing overlay. The HDHO was intended to provide affordable housing for our local workforce. In some ways, it's worked and other ways it hasn't. I want to give you insight on the HDHO and how it affects the lender, agencies and the servicers of a loan. First, we determine if the loan is a qualified mortgage or a non-qualified mortgage. This is about income, loan to value and property type. Most often, a non-qualified mortgage is a is due to property type or it's income related. Affordable affordable housing should be a qualified mortgage or it defeats the purpose of affordable housing. A non-QM mortgage is expensive. It generally has a higher rate and a higher down payment is often required. I'm happy to give a presentation at a later date, explain this in depth if needed. If the loan performs for thirty six months, it's three years, it's considered a seasoned qualified mortgage. If the loan does not perform during the initial thirty six month period, then the clock starts over. And the loan is not considered a seasoned QM loan until we meet the thirty six months. What's an agency? Common agencies you may know FHA, VA, Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae, USDA and Utah Housing. There are the guidelines that we underwrite within. Okay, they're the boss. They tell us what we need to do. A lender, so I'm with Primary Residential Mortgage, we underwrite the loan under these agency guidelines. Lenders can place additional overlays to the agency guidelines that's specific to our company. If we receive a suspense, that's something in question. We need to provide further documentation. This can be a problem because the loan's closed, the seller is paid and the borrower has moved into the property. Under no obligation do they have to provide us with any further documentation. With a suspense, we can't always get the documentation. They're not gonna provide it. The lender can be charged each day the loans in suspense. This is very costly for lenders. Servicing of a loan. This is who the payments pay to after the loan closes. Once closed, we may retain the loan for servicing or sell the loan and the servicing rights. The servicing side of a loan can have a different set of rules and overlays. The servicer pays a premium for the loan. If they find a discrepancy in the loan within that three years, we're charged a buyback. This will put a lender out of business. The file can be audited anytime during that three year time period. Let's say a borrower calls because they lost their job or simply can't make their payment. The loan will be audited and if they find any discrepancy, this will result in a buyback. The discrepancies can be within the appraisal, title, deed restriction, income, assets, occupancy or contract. It's important for lenders to follow specific rules in place to avoid this. We have team members fighting each and every day on suspense conditions. It's a big part of our job. Deed restrictions. As a lender, we can all do homework upfront to determine if the loan meets agency guidelines or grant approval or deny the loan based on the restrictions. It's later in the process if approved that can become that can become problematic and result for the lender to have a buyback. So now that you're aware of how lending works, the servicing works, let's talk about the issue. We know properties have been financed by all agencies that are within the high density overlay. So why would I ask you to modify the overlay of financing spin available? Seems like there's no lending issues if homes were sold and financed, right? Well, as of January twenty twenty five, Murphy Flats. Uh condominium project, which is in the HDHO, was denied by FHA based on an impermissible restriction on conveyance and renders the units. Within the project ineligible for FHA mortgage insurance. If the unit is sold or rented to an unqualified party, the county can revoke permits and certificates of occupancy. The restriction voids any transfer of the unit to any party that doesn't qualify as an active employed household. The issue is about the enforcement of the HDHO. The county can revoke permits and certificates of occupancy years later if found in violation. It's referenced several places in the Land Use Code. Any property in the HDHO could become eligible ineligible for financing, even though there may be a loan on the property. Murphy Flats is one project. There are several others spread across the county that fall within the overlay. If a current owner wanted to sell the property, I know I can't originate an FHA loan on that property. Utah Housing has two FHA loan options available and has a new construction grant still available. Most construction loans fall under FHA. The advantage is a down payment of three and a half percent plus most down, most FHAs can be backed with a down payment assistance program. There's very few down payment assistance programs that fall under the relevant conventional. Most primary property buyers that are buying within the HDHO as a primary property are a higher risk for a lender, meaning that they're at the max. So they're putting down as little as as possible and they're right at the cusp of income qualifying. Um, this puts a lender at risk and again, we can audit the file whenever we want. So let me recap the enforcement issue on the HDHO. A permit's given to the developer. And it's the responsibility of the developer to stay within the rules of the HDHO while building the properties. If they don't, the county does several inspections during the building phase and they can deny the certificate of occupancy. But in what instance can the county revoke a permit or occupancy once given? This verbiage should be removed. I believe it was only ever intended to be enforced during the building phase to keep the developers accountable. That's the only. That's the only instance that makes sense to me, to have that in there. It's also the developer's responsibility to build a product that'll sell. This becomes tough because it must paper, pencil out on paper. No developer is going to build for free or take loss. Murphy Flats has some good feedback on why this project has been problematic versus the Kane Creek condos, which are not within the HDHO. I believe the problems are deed restriction imposed within the HDO versus Murphy Flats development. This is something that should be compared. Again, the overlay was meant to provide housing for the workforce, so not prevent the property from being ineligible for financing. All properties within the overlay fall under the enforcement of the land use code. Not all HD, HDHO properties have a homeowners association to enforce the rules. My question to you, as you look over the HDHO section within the land use code would be. How do you want to enforce if the property's in violation? And can you take away a permit and certificate of occupancy after given? Again, my intention isn't to tell you to remove the HDHO. It's to make the needed revisions so the properties can be financed by all agencies. That's what's best for the community.
Thank you. John, you wanna add to that?
I'll, I'll give you perspective from. The business side, capitalist side. So, so those of you that don't know me, I'm John May. I'm a business owner in town and developer. Um, the. The thing that intrigued me and Elisa, my wife, the most about Murphy Flats and we were majority owner of Murphy Flats is that um it provided local housing. Um, the. We've, we feel very fortunate in our economic situation, but we wanted others to be able to. Realize in the benefit of ownership. There's, you know, you have pride in ownership, you can create. Added economic value to you personally. And so we wanted to help provide something that was affordable for the majority of. Uh, our citizens. And I think we did that. We developed an amazing product. It's a, it's a great project. Um. When, when we started it, obviously, there, there's kind of two things that have, I feel personally have slowed sales on primary. Uh, interest rates have changed dramatically from the time we started construction, which when you're working at a, at a. Uh, price point that we're at, the, the added in, in uh interest causes a pretty hefty burden on your monthly payment. The second is we've lost a lot of sales because of the, the, the way the HDHO is written. Um, I've always been an advocate for the HDHO. I think it's a very useful tool. It provided a lot of added density for us on the project that made it quite frankly economical. Um, but some of the requirements that are outlined in it have just made it. Uh, difficult to, for us, from the business side, to monetize our investment. And to uh ultimately get products out to, into the market and housing units occupied. We. Um, you know, we personally, my wife and I own five of the units. Um, to date, we still haven't been able to get them rented, um even though we're actively, right, you know. Marketing them because of similar requirements within the HDHO. Rachel has been listing them from day one. As she's outlined, we've lost a lot of sales because of the way it's written. And my view is, you know, we. This is like probably one of the largest projects, if not the largest project under the HDHO. The policy was written. We knew there was gonna be errors with the policy. Um, that's why we have an active commission and people that help write the rules. So that we can modify it uh when we learn what didn't work. Um, and, and that's why this is outlined here to have that discussion of like, here's some things that didn't work. Are there ways that we can make this better for our community? Um, to be able to provide a, you know, a better product. I, I, I would just add the, the thing that I am always thinking about is like. When we're building housing or building businesses or doing any sort of investment within our community. Um, these, this is an expensive project. It's, 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 in my view, infrastructure for our community. And um, we want that to be invested into by people that are already here in our community. Um, for me personally, from the way the rules are written now, it makes it very difficult for me to do another project. Not saying I wouldn't, but it's, it's much harder to go forward because of the risks. Uh, uh, associated with it as opposed to like a Kane Creek project or something without the restriction. Um, and, and so that's like the recycling of the capital is the way I view it is like. Is it better for me to be placing my capital elsewhere for the return that we need? So we're always kind of thinking about that and these restrictions make it, just make it more difficult to do that. So, thank you.
Trish, we'll go to Trish and then Mary.
Okay, so and Mary, I, I'm gonna make a recommendation and then yeah, you guys can ask questions. My recommendations. We go back to the housing subcommittee. We parse out Ronnie, if, if Rachel wants to be on that, I'd recommend Ben and Caitlin because they had a lot of recommendations. You guys go through it and then it goes to the planning commission. It wouldn't just come right to us. We would send that red line version to the planning commission and then it moves to us. I mean. To me, that's a proper, I mean, since we've already kind of said we're gonna work on it there, you guys work on it with. Ben says he has all kinds of ideas. Caitlin says she has all kinds of ideas. So I'd like you guys just to meld those. Push it through the planning commission. I know, you know, Aaron's wanted to see this for a long time. It's great that other people want to take this on and then it comes back to us. So I don't feel like we need to keep talking about this tonight. That's just my opinion. Um.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna address that first, Mary, and then I'll come back to you. Um, Trish, another commissioner, put this on the agenda. And any commissioner has the privilege of adding something to the agenda.
Understood, I didn't.
Other commissioners don't get to tell them they can't do that. And that's all I'm saying. This has been very educational for the majority of us. And I know that Mary might even have some more questions. And yes, it can move through the process. But this commission needs educated about this.
I understand.
All we're trying to do, rather than saying a commissioner shouldn't have put this on here, that's not.
I don't think I said that. I just felt that it was, it was, we had, we were in process. Does that make sense? And so it just felt weird, if that makes sense.
Well, it only feels weird.
Talking about it.
Let's go on, Mary. Go ahead with your questions and then Mike.
I, I, I didn't, like I said, I didn't get to study this as much as I wanted, but in the little bit that I got to study it today, I did spend an hour. Uh, one of the things, only, only, I liked a lot of the things that were being taken out. I thought, well, yeah, that's too much, that's too much. But my, my biggest concern I came up with, so when you're working in the committee or when you're doing it, is. I think one reason we made it so strict in the beginning is we're, we were really worried that. People, we want, like you said, we want people in community to have the home. We want this floor of people in the community, not to rent, but to own a home. And my fear is in that part where take the residency ownership kind of out. I, I wonder if that could be like a percentage, if that would work better, that. That a certain percent can be sold to the mother in Denver, like you suggested. Or.
I think that we're open to whatever.
So, and I might be paranoid, but I'm just. We're, we're a huge, you know, we're attractive. Grant County's attractive. People want to live here. That's why our housing is so expensive. That what would happen would be too many, would, there would be. That bad seed that would see it as a possibility of a money maker. I can buy this house and start renting it. And da, 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 da. And I, you know, and then, then all of a sudden, we have a bunch, we have these condos that turn into renters, renting. Instead of a homeownership. I, 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 am I making myself at all clear?
I do, I do think you're making yourself clear, but I also want you to realize that there are a lot of people in this community that don't want to own a home. They want to rent. We, we need rentals desperately.
We do, so.
And like a fifty fifty. And so when it comes to condominium, so like the HDHO is like blanketed over all sorts of different types of products. So you have Peak View, that's single family homes and twin homes. Um, and then you have Murphy Flats, which is a condominium complex. Um, there's the new one that's being built on Spanish Valley Drive, Canton Road. Yeah, they're, 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 they're townhomes. They're gonna have different rules when it comes to, to how they are structured because of the type of product. Condominiums in particular are extremely difficult. And, and they, they have different rules when it comes to Freddie Mae, Fanny Mae and Freddie Mac. And Fanny Mae and Freddie Mac with condominiums, you can't, you can't have fifty percent investments in general. You have to have fifty percent occupied units or they have to be either second homes or primary residence. In order for them to be financeable at all.
I'm just thinking out, so I, I, I'm just trying to think about, you know, the few things that I saw that kind of rose to the top of the concern.
Yeah.
I spent all those hours part of the process is uh. And you helped me with one of the things you said is that each, each of the projects have a different.
Yeah, yeah.
They have a different book.
Like lending is easier than.
Would it be.
Single family homes.
You, you do a lot of writing and such. Would it be difficult? When, with the rewriting of this, in the fixing of it up, that it was. Specific that these type of housing, when it's uh separate, you know, when they're not connected. That these type of housing, we, th- these are more like homes than people would want to buy, you know? And that this, these types of projects, uh, we want, I'm just throwing out a number, please don't even think it has anything to do with anything. Has a twenty-three point four percent can be sold to somebody outside. I'm throwing, I'm throwing a stupid number so that, that. Uh, and, but then this project. Would align more that fifty percent or sixty percent. See what I'm saying?
I think that you're on the right track of saying that not every type of product can be put in the same basket and that, and that's.
The hard thing about writing something is because you can't rewrite it every time a new project comes in.
That's the thing, yeah. It is, it is a blanket.
But with HDHO, you already have your three hundred approved units.
How can we, how can, you know, how, how can we rewrite this ordinance? So that it can cover some of those hiccups that were, you know, they're more than hiccups. They're, they're, they're roadblocks.
Mary, I'd like, I'd like Mike to speak and then Brian and Melody. It's just a discussion item. I think you're. Great points. I think we need to get them in their own little basket. You know, so that each type has its on there, but let's get the discussion done and then we. Move this into a future workshop or get it through the process. Mike, go ahead.
My, my trouble here is quick. Please uh come to the housing subcommittee and thank you for being here tonight. Uh, I know you can't speak for all of the HDHO programs. How long have they been, with the totality? How long has CBOs been? Been done? How long have they been built?
On Murphy Flats?
On Murphy Flats.
We are, we're in a half.
Yeah, I think you're gonna have.
And we had.
How many units are empty?
Right now, since he took um five as equity, um, we're down to nine that are empty. His five are empty.
Fourteen are empty. Five, nine are on the market, five are vacant.
Okay.
Out of the thirty-six that were.
For roughly a year and a quarter, year and a half.
Yeah, it was a pretty large amount that sold right off the bat.
And I don't know where, this is a, a separate, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know where CNHA's ownership is directly located. Uh, Sam.
I do. They have, they have three units in Murphy Flats and they have two units in Peak View.
And. And Sam uh Winger has uh spoken to me uh in both uh CNHA meetings. And uh in, in private conversations, uh, we have spoken that they are seeing. The CNHA uh puts Arch's uh temporary staff in, in their units.
BLM and Forest Service.
BLM Forest Service, Arch's.
Oh, I love it.
Openly, I mean, everywhere. Uh, and they, they have that large problem with actually the last, the definitions. Uh, and the month out of a twelve month period of an occupancy for a dwelling unit through the lease. Uh, term no shorter than two months.
That, we put that in there specifically for them. Because they've been given, um, from HASSU, they've been told that they're in violation of the HDHO.
Yeah.
For putting their park workers in there for two months, three months, and, and not six months.
And we want to put more park, or have the ability for more park workers.
Correct.
To call it transitional housing. I mean, CNHA. Hey, come to work in our residential parks or our area. And then CNHA has to sit on that investment empty during that timeline, so they're not in fault with HASSU.
And, and I sold them this product.
Yeah.
So, and, and I thought we qualified and I was. Blown away that it's a new staff member comes on and they interpret it differently and tell them they're in violation.
And we, we really want, uh, from my point of view, I don't know about the totality commission. Uh, when an Archer's worker comes in, to have a place to come in, to get set up, to start work. And then hopefully they find a house.
Yeah.
Outside of CNHA. That's CNHA's hope too.
Yeah.
Uh, is, I mean, great, they found a house? What luck?
The transitional.
But that, you know, it, it falls on an extra fee of CN, CNHA and an extra inability to help. Uh, help another worker come to dump because HASSU says it has to sit empty because of the restriction.
We've denied at least five people that have wanted to buy um units for um the hospital. Um, uh, di- different retirees that are invested or, but they, they didn't ever work here. Uh, but they wanted to buy units for um people specifically for the hospital, but since they didn't work. As retirees in Grant County prior to retiring, they don't qualify to purchase in order to rent to somebody from the hospital. So, like, they're all real life scenarios.
And to wrap up my uh comments. This is not, this discussion was never meant to circumvent uh planning commission. This discussion is to. Build a product that we all like, including planning commission likes. And move that forward in a timely manner, because it's been a year and a half. And just a year's long, fourteen units are empty. Uh, people are, people now can't get houses. We don't need a government and put that out another year, trying to speed that along.
Thanks, Mike, Brian, and Melody.
I'd like to thank Melody and Mike and you guys for coming on out here. I mean, I don't think there's. Enough locations where we can actually talk about housing and start getting this out there, whether it's here or there. But once we get these ideas moving, then we can go ahead and start moving them through the process. So I just really want to thank you for taking the effort to go ahead and do this. Couple of things, since we have fourteen units basically sitting ready on market right now that are being restricted by these. By these, what's it, six, six type of uh problems, is that correct? Six bullet point problems?
Uh, yeah, I would say that we would have, I would definitely have those fourteen units sold if, if I could. If we did, if we have these changes.
The question.
You know, those buyers probably aren't here today and.
No.
Move on, but, but yeah.
But this would, this would speed that along with fourteen units that we're looking at right there. And then the sixty units that were not built, um, has that, has that time elapsed? Does anybody know? I think you had mentioned there's sixty.
There's sixty units built out of three hundred?
Two hundred and forty unbuilt.
It's two hundred and forty unbuilt.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Out of three hundred homes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we still have two hundred and forty that need rules, or has that sunsetted already?
Uh, the three hundred was your sunset of, of how many units you could have.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and I know that Peak View has um a few more phases and um they're, they're. They're just having trouble getting any of them, their lots sold because of, it's so cumbersome.
And, and what, and what I'm trying to get at is I'm just trying to figure out if these changes were made, how, what's the total, what's the total uh, uh, supply that we basically? Would we be putting out onto the market? Would we be looking at two hundred and fifty homes that we could possibly be getting built?
Um, I don't have a relationship with all of the developers, so I don't know.
General, just a general.
You've approved three hundred.
Yeah.
So three hundred, so the possibility of two hundred and thirty homes. That's a significant amount, right?
Yes.
You know, and then just a couple of things, um, Ronnie, you had mentioned that, like, that suspense right there. So if there's a suspense, does that mean that further on down the line, that once, basically, once there's been one red flag raised? That everybody else afterwards, that the people that were in, right?
Yeah.
Or now everybody else that comes in is already gonna have to fight, face that flag as well.
Yep.
Right?
Yep. Well, lenders are not gonna lend on it. So now, right now, in HDHO, any property, any property, I don't care if it's single family, townhome, doesn't matter, cannot do it in FHA loan.
Cause that flag's already been raised.
Matter of time. We don't know what Fanny, Freddie, um, we don't know what the rest are gonna take out of it.
We've pushed the FHA extremely hard, run all avenues to make sure that we can do FHA loans.
Redenied, yeah.
Like, that's the most advantageous for people. This benefit the most.
The, the loans that we've been able to get for Murphy Flats right now are in-house loans through our portfolio. Through a portfolio loan and Ronnie's company was not able to do that for us, but a company. Through a portfolio loan and Ronnie's company was not able to do that for us, but a company, um, out of Salt Lake Intercap Lending. Has, um, held all of our loans in-house. It was not their intention from the beginning. Um, they planned to sell them to Freddie Mac or Fanny May. Um, they've ended up. They, they can't sell the loans. So they're holding them in-house.
We've also done seller financing just to get the, the units occupied with a very low down payments because we have people that.
But that was to the extent that they could financially. Um, and then also as. Shout out to them as developers, like they have paid down interest rates. Um, they, they've done great things for these locals we've put into place. To make, make things work um, for the people who have been able to qualify.
Yeah, no, I know. And, and I just look at it, you know, I look at it, this is crisis, right? We have a housing crisis that's said, but then there's never a sense of urgency. You know, and so I'd like to just make sure that you know that at least that I have, I have that sense of urgency and I really do appreciate these conversations coming up. Um, but I see that there's fourteen units that, that are possibly available as soon as we make a couple of changes, right? That's, that's a very bright light. And a possibility of two hundred and forty more coming up on the market, right? That's, that's, that's a big step and something I think that we could do. Fairly quickly, right? And, and, and um, like I said, I really appreciate Mike and Melody for getting this in front of us because it seems like it's a great opportunity. Um, you know, one thing as well as I just. When I've watched some of the original conversations about the HDHO, when, when, when the commission was brought up with problems and things that might happen, the what ifs. Right? What if this, what if that, what if this? Can't remember how many times I heard said, well, we can always go back and change it. Right? Like that was always kind of the idea is like, hey, if this doesn't work out, we can always go back and change it. And I feel like this is our opportunity to say, hey, this, we, we, we put this out there right now. Now we can go back and we can make it better. Um, cause I mean, I, I think that we do want to make sure that there, when there's people who are willing to come in here and build affordable housing. Right? That we're not gonna sour, sour the taste of their mouth, right? We want them to keep coming back and help us out, help us out with the problem. I mean, I think, I think there's. There's a lot of components that get, that are gonna be involved in what you call it, obtainable housing or subsidized housing or, you know, or uh, uh, affordable housing, however you put it. Right? There's gonna be a lot of players that need to be, that, that are gonna need to come together. You know, we're gonna need land, we're gonna need, you know. Uh, land use code, we're gonna need finance, right? We're gonna need people who sell and we're gonna need uh, people who develop. So, I mean, whatever, whatever I can do to, to, to keep that ball moving. Um, I'm, I'm willing to have the conversation here, the housing task force or, you know, wherever it is, sitting for over a cup of coffee.
Just feel that time is of the essence. It's been a long while.
Yes.
Yeah.
How, how long have these fourteen been on, been on the market?
No, uh, so it's just the beginning of twenty twenty-two, before that, probably.
I mean, that's fourteen families right there. Wow. But thanks so much.
Yeah, I think that's the where, why it's on the agenda is because it's not moving fast enough through the housing committee. I mean, this has been something that was on my radar before I even ran for commission. And you know, when I talk about twenty twenty-two and a year and a half vacant. Um, three hundred have been approved, but only two hundred, but only six are built. Of those fourteen I mean, lived in, two hundred and forty are built. Um, there's a big issue. I'm looking at the. The last time that the HDHO was modified and it was November seventh of twenty twenty-three. And it does say right in here, whereas as the HDO program is a pilot program, the county is actively monitoring its successes. Doesn't really sound like. So actively monitoring its successes and shortcomings. And from time to time, as we revise aspects of the program in order to improve its goal of providing housing to local workforce. So. It's gonna take changes to the land use code, which is gonna require a hearing, which is gonna then come before us. So I mean, we're looking at a, a month and a half out before. Anything can happen already. They've already been sitting there for this long. And so I think that there's a, a definite sense of urgency. I'd like to discuss these things tonight. And be able to redline them and send them to the planning and zoning commission and let them approve and we get them back to us so we can have a hearing. Now, I don't think that tabling it any longer is acceptable. I really think we need to get these going and that way the people that have the, you know, the other. Two hundred and forty units could start building. You know, this isn't something that we're gonna continue going. It's sunsetted. The law, the, the ordinances that we approve and change is gonna basically just be these three hundred homes that are gonna be affected by it. And then hopefully we'll go further. Um, HB thirty-seven was approved through legislature, which is gonna be an overlay. And so maybe that's gonna be our future way to go. But at the moment, this just has to be fixed. And so that's how, I would love to talk about it. Right now and get some ideas so we can go to my, and I can go to Stephen's office and redline it and push it on to the planning and zoning and get it going.
Send an action item. This is a discussion item.
It is discussion.
Yeah, I, I would, I would much rather see uh, a work, uh, a workshop. Where we, we've all, cause I don't know what happened seriously guys. I pulled up my agenda yesterday. And I went through the whole thing and, and that wasn't in it.
I didn't see it either, but.
It wasn't in it. I don't know if there was a glitch in uh. In, in uh. No, I, I'm, I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just saying. I haven't had the opportunity to do what Melody's done. Because, or, 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 and Trish didn't see, I don't know how we didn't. But we didn't get it. So.
I don't think that's reason enough to hold it up again, Mary. It's, I think the point here. The fact that you and Trish didn't see this is not reason enough to continue throwing up roadblocks. The red line tonight, or do we make it a. Workshop at the beginning of the next meeting and get it out of the way because we do.
You know, that would be fine if you did it as workshop, but right now I, I've just.
Done with.
We're two months away, you know, two months away instead of, uh, six weeks away, but.
Okay, go, go through your list.
Please, let's, let's workshop it at the next meeting. Please. And then we can make sure that Caitlin's here, Ben's here, they have a lot of input. You know, I, this is. Again, it's like we talk about, you, we want people involved. We want transparency. This was supposed to be a discussion item. It wasn't supposed to be an action item.
There's no action being taken.
Let's just workshop it the next time. That allows everybody to come prepared. We, I want Ben Riley here. He said he's got a long list of items that he thinks can be changed. Caitlin's, she has a list.
Can we be part of the discussion?
Absolutely, one hundred percent, one hundred percent. Yeah, I mean, absolutely.
Cause we're, we're the ones on the ground selling it.
I understand, no, one hundred percent. I, I want all, I want everybody involved. Right now, we don't have everybody. You know, and so I, I, I'd rather have everybody involved. And, and having respect for that.
It's our next, um.
The subcommittee, and we can do, we can do, we can do a workshop before the county commissioner, we can do a workshop before the planning commission. Um, however you want to do it. We could do a workshop before the next county commission. We may not. We'll probably just workshop it and then it might pass the meeting after that, but we can do that.
It can be an agenda in a month.
Anyway, right. So maybe if we push that meeting, we can give you. For your workshop before you're. Okay, I like that idea. And I hadn't sent it out, what, remember I said, oh, I was kind of waiting, but Ben said, I can go ahead. So I can write it right down to sit, right now to send out a poll.
Yeah.
And get that rolling. Yeah, good with that if that's how you guys want to do it.
The housing task force is this thirsty at.
Well, it's not the task force, this was the sub, the housing subcommittee. So if you guys are good with the housing subcommittee taking that task on. And then they would push forward recommendations to a workshop to the county commission. I think that would be great.
What I'm good with is letting Mike speak and then we'll make that decision.
If that's not often, I stay quiet. I think task board can take all that. Would, would love you there. I would like to ask staff at this point also, I would like an action item. Uh, going forward on the next meeting of sending this uh, on to planning commission. I, 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 whatever we decide, I want sent to planning commission and returned. If it needs a public comment period, I am not sure on that. Stephen, I lean to you. Uh, after said point, I would like that to come right back to commission. At its earliest date for decision.
Go ahead, Melody.
How about it just goes to the task force or the housing subcommittee that you guys, you guys redline it, send it to planning, don't come back to the commission and, because we get after dated. We're just adding more time to it. So you guys go ahead and work on it. You know, and then send it off to planning because I think with all these people in the room, they're gonna have a great, it's gonna, it's gonna be great.
I'll send out a poll tomorrow to the.
And then send it to planning and then it'll come back as a public hearing again.
Special housing task for, uh, housing.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send out a poll.
Is the seventh the planning and?
Let's worry about the first meeting first and we'll make sure that everybody's invited and that will be the agenda. We, I think we also have that other agenda item we want, but we'll just work on those too. Okay, great.
Moving. We have a plan forward. It works.
Yep.
For you and all of it.
Me, it's, I want everybody involved and I want us to be, yeah, I want everybody involved.
All right. So uh, thank you. It's been fun tonight. I appreciate it. I know it's.
Really learned a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know what the word, it's been fun. Yeah, I do appreciate it. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to add a little humor to what's been a heated discussion, but I appreciate all the effort that you guys have put into it.
One thing we can all agree on is we're passionate about housing in our community and, and we're all just trying to come to the same positive thing.
Yep, I agree. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks. And with that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to go to the closed session.
Oh, no, you go.
To uh, discuss character competency.
And seconded by Commissioner Do. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Mary, are you okay?
Yeah, I was like, we have to kick it out now.
Oh, sorry.
Even have to kick Andrew out.
Pass, it passes.
He has his own chair if he didn't. No, we're gonna go right in, take it out here.
I just wanted to ask you, I, I was confused. I have a question for you.
Yes.